Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The date is December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the time is five P. M. We will start this meeting as we do all of our meetings off with a moment of silence. I would ask that you keep in mind the families and friends of those victims who died in those horrible hurricanes, not hurricanes, tornadoes over the weekend. And also, we lost a sixteen-year-old child. We had a five-year-old in a hit-and-run, so just pray for their families as well. A moment of silence, please. Mr. President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we have a number of people who are probably new to these chambers. I do want to recognize every one of the rules of civility and decorum that we've adopted as this body. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. And I just want to remind everyone, we have a very strict mask mandate, so while you in these chambers, you need to wear your mask. Offenders may be removed from the meeting. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, leations, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item ten point two is requested to be moved to after the consent calendar for the board's consideration for a continuance to the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Commission meeting.
Okay, so we will consider that after consent. Okay. We do have some appointments that require Commission approval. Six point one, Commission approval is requested for the mayor's reappointment of Daniel T. Cannavon to the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals for a term of three years to expire on November first, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Cannavon has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and it is required that the City Commission confirm his reappointment. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we reappoint Mr. Cannavon because of his experience as Chair of the Board and for his professional expertise.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Six point two, City Commission approval was requested for my reappointment of Patricia J. Sned to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term of two years that expires on November first, two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. Sned has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and it is required that the City Commission confirm her reappointment. Any questions, comments? Not entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we reappoint Ms. Sned because of her years of experience as Chair and for her strong representation in her South End neighborhood.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Thank you. Item six point three, City Commission approval was requested for my reappointment of Steve Mayans to the Planning Board for a term of three years to expire on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Mayans has served over the maximum number of allowed terms, and it is required that City Commission confirm his reappointment. Any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we reappoint Mr. Mayans due to his experience as Chair and his professional expertise.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. We will now turn to the consent calendar. Items seven point one through seven point nine. Any cards? Okay. Any questions, comments on consent? Do you have something from the portal on consent?
I have a public comment on seven point seven.
On seven point seven, okay. Let me see if there's any questions from the Commission. All right, hearing none. If you want to read those comments, please.
Okay, this comment is from Ross Harness, three twelve Twenty-third Street, West Palm Beach. At the Broadway Reimagined Community Meeting on November eighteenth, it was said the construction date is in five years, in two thousand and twenty-seven. Residents do not have until two thousand and twenty-seven to wait for these improvements. What can the city do today in anticipation of the major improvement come two thousand and twenty-seven? Five years is a long time to keep the community engaged. One method to pursue community support is doing small steps today, showing what the new corridor could look like without spending the millions this is forecast to cost. Use the community engagement budget if needed. Some examples, and again, four examples. The city is committed to Vision Zero in two thousand and eighteen. It's time to put actions to work and show the community what a true Vision Zero commitment looks like. According to the Vision Zero Network, Black and Hispanic residents share disproportionate share of traffic-related fatalities. The three-three-four-seven zip code is majority Black with significant Hispanic population. I implore the city to act now and spend money in a meaningful way to keep the community engagement high and move towards a Vision Zero goal in this corridor. We can't wait until two thousand and twenty-seven to make small incremental changes happen.
Is that? You have a second one? The only one?
That's the only one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Shoff?
Mayor, if I may make a comment on that item for the record?
If you what?
May make a comment on item seven point seven for the record. I appreciate staff working on this item, and this is just step number one in the series of a number of steps to move forward with some beautification items on Forty-Fifth Street. And as both the District Commissioner there and as the liaison to the CRA Advisory Board, there is a strong will to go back to the state and see what we can do to escalate this project. We need to first make sure it stays on the state's radar, which is what this resolution is, so I would ask for your support this evening, Commissioners, in moving this forward and pending some action after that, that we will be asking the state to consider moving this up on their priority list. So, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments on consent? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to turn to ten point two because there is a request to continue this item until the date's certain, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we continue item ten point two to date certain of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we'll get that out the way. Okay. Item eight point one, Resolution Number three oh four dash twenty-one granting face of the city approval of an entrance monument sign in connection with the Belvedere Gateway Project on Belvedere Road between South Dixie Highway and South Olive Avenue and approving a neighborhood improvement license agreement between L. Sid Neighborhood Association and the city for the partial funding of the monument for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much. My name is Don Gustafson with the Engineering Services, here to present the Belvedere Gateway Monument Sign Revision. There's a location map. It's located, the job site's located between Belvedere Road, Dixie, and Olive. Previous approval, the above-ground improvements approved under Resolution Number two oh four dash nineteen on June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. There's landscape islands that were installed in the proposed monument sign. The original monument sign request was approved under Resolution Number two oh four dash nineteen on June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. This is the new proposed monument sign. The city and neighborhood associate entered into an agreement for cost sharing and maintenance. City funding five thousand, L. Sid neighborhood funding not to exceed fifteen thousand. The dimensions are about three feet wide and thirteen feet high, made of kokina stone, topped with a pineapple sculpture. We're requesting approval of Resolution Number three oh four dash twenty-one.
Very good. Any questions? Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. I know we've done something similar in Northwood Shores where, in essence, the monument funding, which is the traditional city monument, the city agrees in lieu of having that monument placed that they'll contribute a portion towards the neighborhood. In this particular instance, I just wanted to verify from the perspective both of liability, if this monument sits in the median, if it's hit by a car, et cetera, who is responsible for replacing the monument and who assumes the liability to any injuries, et cetera, that may occur?
The resolution says that the Neighborhood Association will own the monument and also be responsible for maintenance and liability.
Okay, so they're responsible for liability both in rebuilding the monument or taking it out if it's far beyond damaged, and liability for any incidences that make her around it.
That's correct. Also, if there's a number of vehicles, we have the ability to pull the monument at the city's request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I wasn't here when we originally voted on this in two thousand and nineteen. I'm just wondering if you can tell us a little bit about the process for the neighborhoods. I've heard from other neighborhoods that were interested in having a sign, you know, in their area. I'm wondering, is it just as easy as them coming forward to us and asking us to, for a location? Or can you give me a little bit of the background about how this might work for other neighborhoods? Thank you.
The background that I believe is that the city came forward while we were planning the changes, and that when they did, that the person who was in charge then went through ahead and had two designs made up, and this is the second design that was chosen. So they came up, they came forward and just had the resolution that they could pay for that and they'd be responsible for it.
So that was because there was already a sign, I think, in that location?
Yes.
But what if there wasn't, what if a neighborhood wanted to have a sign in their neighborhood that doesn't already have an existing sign? Is it as easy as the neighborhood coming forward to us to ask for something like that?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information at this time.
Commissioners, are you finished?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I can kind of clarify in some of the history of what we've previously approved on this commission for Northwood Shores. So staff displayed the monument sign there, which is lovingly referred to as the tombstone sign, which is the standard neighborhood sign. And so when we have previously looked at this, neighborhoods come forward, and in lieu of having one of those standard signs installed, staff has looked at the considered monuments. So in Northwood Shores, they funded the portion above the five thousand dollars, and so what traditionally has happened with staff is that if neighbors want to install a sign, they bring that plan, and I think staff considers anything up to five thousand dollars, which was what had occurred at North Shore Neighborhood. So that way, if a neighborhood so desires to have gold cast something as part of their monument, then they're in charge of funding that portion of it, but everyone has the option to fund up until five thousand dollars within staff's discretion.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution three oh four dash two one.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight point two, Resolution Number three 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 dash twenty-one F authorizing the transfer of two million nine hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars from the one cent sales tax budget account for South Dixie Renovations Phase One to the one cent sales tax budget account for citywide roadway improvements. Mr. Fana?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. So I'm going to do a quick overview. Kevin Volbreit provided this commission and the mayor with an overview of the penny sales tax program a couple of months ago at a mayor-commission workshop, but just a quick rundown here. The penny sales tax was approved back in November of two thousand and sixteen. It's a ten-year program with a maximum funding amount of sixty million dollars. Of that, there are twelve million dollars that are, about twelve point three million dollars that are allocated towards roadway improvements. This evening, you are going to be considering a reallocation into the roadway improvement budget, which is why we're here. Quickly, these are just some of the projects that have been completed to date that are roadway improvement projects. I'm not going to go into great detail here, but I just did want to show a snapshot of the projects that have been completed to date. And there you see a picture of Tamrin Avenue, which had some safety improvements that were done recently as well. There are still some projects that are underway. Roosevelt Estate, Seventh Street is one of them, Thirty-first to Thirty-fifth Street Improvements and Washington Street. All those are currently in progress and part of the funding that comes out of the roadway improvement budget from the penny sales tax. Sorry about that. Looks like we had a frozen computer. There we go. So, as I mentioned, the reason we're here tonight is to look at reallocating funds, and one of the things that we saw was the funding that was approved for South Dixie Highway, that project, and again, I'm not going to rehash the whole history of it, but basically it was an enhancement to South Dixie Highway that was part of a collaboration with the Florida Department of Transportation. It included roadway improvements, included lane elimination, and some sidewalk and median enhancements. There was some back and forth with the community on that one, and due to some unfavorable feedback and lack of interest from the Florida Department of Transportation proceeding, they pulled that project in the summer of two thousand and twenty. So therefore, the funding from the Florida Department of Transportation is no longer available. The city's allocation of that was three point one million dollars of the total project. Of that, we have about two point nine million remaining. There was some money spent on design work, so that is the funds that we're asking to be looked at in order to be reallocated. So, one of the things that we've been looking at are what are the projects that are unfunded that are on the kind of the priority list? One of those is South Dixie. In October two thousand and twenty-one, we brought to the Penny Sales Tax Oversight Committee a review of this South Dixie project and removing the funds from South Dixie and moving them over to the citywide road improvements, and including in that was repaving of South Dixie. Actually, I just took this picture this morning. This is pretty common when you look at South Dixie, I'm sorry, when you look at Flagler Drive, the conditions there, and a lot of this has to do with the fact that it's the proximity of the intercoastal. The intrusion of brackish water when you have high tides really deteriorates this road a lot quicker than you would normally see, and so you have a lot of pitted areas, potholes, discoloration throughout, and really, when you drive through Flagler Drive, that is one of the, really one of the great roads that we have in our city. I mean, it is a jewel for the city, and to have it look like this is really unacceptable. And so when we talked within staff about where we can put some of the funds, we wanted to keep it on the South End because this is coming from South Dixie Highway. This was one of the roads that was on the priority list that we have established, and as you see there, the breakdown, the funding would be allocated towards several areas of South Flagler, from Southern to Bunker Ranch, Bunker Ranch to Gregory, and then Southern to Greenwood, and which are some of the areas that are most impacted. And there you see the estimated cost for those repavings. So staff is recommending approval of three thirty-three twenty-one F. Just wanted to add that this is one project. There are a number of projects on the priority list in the pipeline for roadway improvements, and this is not the only funding source that we have for roadway improvements. We also utilize gas tax, and obviously, as we get funding in from the federal government with this infrastructure bill or other funds that we're looking at getting in, we will try to allocate funds as much as we can to these priority roadway improvements. And they're prioritized based on a couple of things. One is the condition assessments that have been done. The other is whether or not there's matching grants requirements. Sometimes utility projects are being done, and at the same time, we can simultaneously leverage those and be able to do the roads. So there's several criteria that we're using to prioritize, but we feel pretty confident this is the right place to move these particular funds because of where it's coming from and because of the conditions of South Flagler. Any questions?
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Fana, for the presentation and for bringing this forward. I can appreciate that we're looking to keep these funds in the South End of the city since that's where they were originally slated, so thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify on a few different items here. The first is the, where will these funds be moved to? Is it a matter just of moving the funds from one account to another? Is it, are they going into a larger pot that then be reallocated? How will we ensure that these funds stay slated for this project?
So when this was originally approved by the voters and then by the City Commission, the funds are allocated into different buckets. The South Dixie project had its own specific bucket. Within that, within the overall budget is a citywide roadway improvements category in the budget. The funds would move to there. However, we've already, we already have designs in place for South Flagler, so the project is pretty much shovel-ready, a lot of it, so these funds will be automatically going to that particular project. And what we do in the budget is we identify, it was called a project number, that identifies it specifically for that project.
Okay, and this will be for a project from, let's see, Gregory to Greenwood?
Yeah, there's three different phases there, but basically, you know, the majority of South Flagler is, I think all of South Flagler is covered in there.
And so there won't be additional funding that'll be needed to complete this project?
No, it's fully funded. I think you mentioned that there may be something that the state is looking at funding. It's actually part of this, so if that happens, great, then we just have a little bit more money that we can utilize for other projects elsewhere.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Just two questions. When we're looking at Flagler Drive, I'm certainly supportive of making sure that we improve our roadway in the South End. We have a number of issues on North Flagler Drive as well, with major issues with flooding, the condition of the roadway, et cetera. I know we're about to undergo a construction project near the Curry Park area, et cetera. How are we going to start to identify, looking at this road as a whole, you know, as we go along? How do we make those improvements?
Yeah, and you mentioned Curry Park, and we obviously have a lot of funding for Curry Park and flood mitigation there. Just today, the mayor was with, in a press conference with Congresswoman Frankel, talking about the infrastructure bill, and so a lot of those improvements along the seawall and, you know, hopefully those funds are flexible enough that we'll be utilizing them also for these roadway improvements. Because as we look at seawall improvements, that's also going to have to include sidewalk and the street as well, in some cases even elevation of the streets. So, and a lot of that's going to occur on that North End, so we anticipate that some of those funds can be allocated for the North End improvements, which are needed for sure.
Thank you, and second question if I may make?
Yes.
So looking at the funding mechanism behind the penny sales tax, so unlike the parks bond where we financed a chunk of money and then we were given that money to allocate to projects, the penny sales tax has a list of projects associated with it, but taxes are collected over time. So there is a schedule for when those projects are in the priority order. So if we take this funding, does that fall in line with when those sales tax are going to be collected? So in other words, there's a number of community center projects, the first responder safety facilities, et cetera. Will, is our intention to take this out of the tranche that we have today? And if it is, is it the turn in line for this project yet?
Yes, in the sense that we, because we didn't fund South Dixie, we're actually now behind on that. The designs are already completed for the Flagler repaving, and so we'll be able to move on that fairly quickly, and really, what we're doing is catching up because the South Dixie project wasn't funded. So yes, if anything, we're a little bit behind on that. Moving this will get us to spend it quicker. If we try to fund another project outside the South End or whatever, we're still probably not having design work done yet, and we're beginning from scratch in some cases.
To summarize back, and I'm making up the numbers in priority, but if this was listed on the list of priority number four, we've now been funding priority number five, six, and seven, so this missed its funding opportunity at Dixie Highway, so that funding is already pooled into this funding mechanism.
Correct. And, you know, I just want to say, sometimes it's not really numerical order. Sometimes it's opportunity order. If you have a project where there is other funds that come in that we can match, that may, and it's on the priority list, that may jump the priority because now we have matching funds to be able to complete it, or maybe part of the utility project, so it's not necessarily numerical order. Sometimes it's opportunity order.
Understood. That is not the case in this case, though. We don't have matching funding or anything like that.
Yeah, so this, yeah, like I said, the South Dixie project, if we would have proceeded as scheduled, would have been underway already, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
I have another question, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Do we have a timeline for this project to start?
I'll let Kevin answer that timeline.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Kevin Volbreit, Director of Engineering. We expect to be able to put this project out to bid at the early part of next year and hopefully be underway with construction and completion probably by summer or fall of next year, if everything goes well.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Kevin, maybe this is for Mr. Fana. You know, there's also construction going on down on Washington Road. Can we somehow coordinate and make sure both of those roads aren't closed at the same time?
Absolutely, and that'll be certainly a factor of the timing on this South Flagler paving project, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission? We do have a card. Richard Pinsky?
Mayor, Commissioners, Richard Pinsky, three five six Valley Forge Road, West Palm Beach. I want to thank the mayor and certainly Commissioner Lambert and all the Commissioners, but I got to tell you, I love the way that Mr. Armando Fana is being creative by taking some money from the South End for one project and switching it to another project. South Flagler is very important to the South End Neighborhood Association, of which I happen to serve as president currently. The one item I would like to point out about South Flagler and why it's so important, on any day, particularly on the weekends, it is not just a South End road. We have folks that come from all over the city that fish along the seawall. We have ample parking along amongst all the side streets, the feeder streets that are residential. There's no restriction on parking. We have folks that come from all over the city just to walk that portion of Flagler from Gregory to Southern, ride their bicycles, et cetera. So I don't want you to necessarily be thinking that, oh my God, what are we doing just for the South End? Because it really is a community, it's not a park, but much of the residents of West Palm Beach and others consider it a place to, as a destination. I don't know what happened in the past as far as how it got on the list and then off the list. I will say the most important is just the paving. Just making that road smooth would be a great deal. Then if we can paint a line for a bicycle, that would be great, and that's really what we're talking about. So again, Mayor, thank you for being creative and figuring out how to move it up. Commissioner Lambert, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, we don't want to be thing in the portal, do we? All right, very good. I will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number three 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 dash two one F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point three, Resolution Number three one two dash twenty-one declaring the name of the new housing and community development, HCD Community Resource Center located at fifteen forty North Australian Avenue as the Eva W. Mack Community Hub. Ms. Ferial?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public, city administration, Jennifer Ferial, Director of Housing and Community Development. As many of members of the community and this board recognizes that the city of West Palm Beach, we own the site located at sixteen hundred North Australian Ave. And for over thirty-five years, it has housed all of the services and the programming of the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County. A little bit, I want to say around, earlier this year, we broke ground on the site, and the site was previously demolished in two thousand and nineteen due to- site, and the site was previously demolished in 2019 due to several structural issues that were faced and different improvements that needed to be made. And it made great sense for us to partner with the Sickle Cell Foundation to develop a new community resource hub. And that hub, in essence, is going to house the Sickle Cell Foundation, of course, and the many services that are provided through the, our Department of Community, our Community Resource Division, known as the Vickers House. So in essence, the project is well underway, and we intend to have the program or the services being offered out of that site beginning of summer of 2022. So this time next year, we'll have a great operating community center for our residents to utilize. Once we started developing this project, and the discussions were being had of this new resource hub, we started to receive a lot of support and discussions, and a lot of residents expressed a deep desire to recognize this resource center and by naming it under Eva W. Mack. And they wanted to commemorate her contributions to our city and the many services and dedication that she provided to our residents. And I'll tell you this, I think the first conversation or the first time I ever heard of Eva W. Mack was in a great discussion with Commissioner Shalonda Warren before she was even our commissioner. And I learned so much about Ms. Mack and all of her contributions and her commitment to our residents. And I'd like to talk a little bit about Ms. Mack and just everything that she's offered, but I would be doing her dishonor. And so I'm really happy to announce and to give that opportunity to her grandson, Mr. Anthony Mack, who joins me here today, to talk a little bit about Ms. Mack and just inform the residents and the members of the public all that she's done to support our community. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor James, and Commissioner Warren, and other commissioners for giving this opportunity. First of all, you can class people by so many actions that they do and they achieve on this side of this world. But when I think about my grandmother, Mayor Eva W. Mack, who was my grandmother, I think of a strong passion that she had, commitment, truth, honesty, and most of all, family values. We grew up in the Pleasant City area, which is in Commissioner Shoff's district at this current time. And during that time, we felt and realized at that time, there was a change necessary and needed. My grandmother only stepped out on faith. And the reason why she stepped out on faith, because she believed that what she did today would carry on for the future. And by carrying on for the future is where we are right now, with the Sickle Cell Foundation moving forward. Even though it's going to be a hub to house so many other great agencies within this city, it is still the viable, viable essence of this city at this current time. We only ask for support, we only ask for dignity, but my grandmother served her service well. If we paraphrase one thing from my grandmother, it would be simply says, as I travel through this way, my living will not be in vain. And everything that she has done in this community, for this community, around this community, through this community, has been for the betterment of people. Race was no color for us, race was no issue for us. We believe, and she believes still to this day, that is still in me and my children, that to move forward and press forward, you must be able to commit to serve others in an unselfish way. This is who Mayor Eva W. Mack, my grandmother was, to this city of the city of West Palm Beach. And this naming of, if you go forth on it, would only be a continued blessing for the future blessings to come moving forward. I thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for allowing me to give just a token, because we could be here all night if we had to talk about it a little bit more. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the entire Mack family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. And I just want to point out that Mrs. Mack was the first African-American Commissioner in the city of West Palm Beach in 1978. She was also the founder of the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County, and served also as our mayor. She served two one-year terms, starting in 1982. So with that being said, and as outlined in Section 203 of our Code of Ordnances, our board has the legal authority to make a final decision regarding the naming of any buildings, and it is my honor and pleasure to recommend approval of Resolution 31221, declaring the new Community Resource Center as the Eva W. Mack Community Resource Hub. And that concludes my presentation, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Thank you very much. And let me say that as an African-American mayor, I truly stand on the shoulders of Ms. Mack, who was the first African-American mayor of our city. Questions, comments, commissioners? Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I too stand on the shoulders of Eva W. Mack, and the fact that she was truly a visionary and worked very closely with other community-based organizations, and stepped out in front to make sure that things happened a certain way. When Eva Mack started the Sickle Cell Foundation, it was out of her home in Pleasant City, but she had the support of every major organization, every major community-based organization in West Palm Beach. It was truly a united front to recognize the importance of this great work. And I'm looking forward to re-energizing that level of community and that level of unity, where we can come together to make sure that we move mountains. And I believe that that is what Eva Mack did at a time, that it was so very important in our society.
Very good. Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward to Mr. Mack. Thank you for coming and sharing. It's the love of grandmothers, right? It's truly a passion. And I think this story is so important and so important to tell. And I was just curious, pending this passing this evening, will there be signage within the building, a plaque on the building, something that signifies so that that story is not lost and can be read for everyone that comes into the community hub as we move into the future?
We will have both, Commissioner. We will have signage, we will also have plaque dedicating the building, and other information throughout the site.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? If not, I will certainly entertain a motion.
I have public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, something over the portal.
Yes.
Okay.
This comment is from Justine Hampton, 2001 Broadway, Riviera Beach. Letter of support to name the building on the construction at 1600 Australian Avenue, the Eva Mack Community Center. This honor is well-deserving of a woman who saw a need in her community and took action to create change. Forty-plus years, and her vision lives on stronger than ever. This comment is from Lucinda, sorry, I can't pronounce her last name, Valentejas, 607 Sixth Court, Palm Beach Gardens. Eva Mack was a servant to the city of West Palm Beach for many years, first as a public health nurse, then a city commissioner, one of the first African-American, and then as mayor. The site of this new building is the site where the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County, founded by Eva Mack, was located. It seems only fitting that the new building be named the Eva Mack Community Center. Next comment is from Delphine McDonald, 2001 Broadway Avenue, Suite 500, Riviera Beach. Eva Mack was an important member of the West Palm Beach community. She saw there was a need for health and social services to be provided in a more personal way. She cared so much that she opened up her home to start a Sickle Cell Foundation to provide services not only to those suffering from this terrible disease, but also to their families and to the community at large. Her unselfishness, caring, and desire to help lead her to become the first black mayor of West Palm Beach, and continue to make improvements for the betterment of all in West Palm Beach. It would only make sense to name the new building being erected where the old Sickle Cell Foundation was located, as Eva Mack Community Center. After all, its purpose would be to provide social services to the community. JR Thiclin, 731 Mill Valley Place, West Palm Beach. I am Reverend Dr. J.R. Thiclin. I am the President of the Palm Beach County Clergy Alliance, and CEO and President of Destiny by Choice, where we are empowering lives and shaping destinies to those impacted by domestic violence, fatherlessness, and other social and health determinants that impact our community. I have been in West Palm Beach for nearly 40 years, and I've seen growth and transformation on many fronts. There have been many different leaders over the period of time that I witnessed, taking on challenges and obstacles that impact the quality of life in our communities, and for that, we are grateful. But I couldn't think of anyone that is more deserving to have this new building named after them than Eva W. Mack. Mrs. Mack being the first black woman to serve as mayor of West Palm Beach, a dedicated nurse, educator, and champion for the cause of quality of life and good health. The location of this new building is the same location in which the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County and Treasure Coast sat, and it was Eva Mack who was the founder of the Sickle Cell Foundation. Her legacy represents innovativeness, determination, and commitment, and proof positive that real heroes and sheros don't need capes when they have heart to look beyond themselves and see the needs of others and respond. I strongly stand in support and recommendation that this new building is named after her and in her honor. Martine Nelson, 2001 Broadway, Suite 500, Riviera Beach. We would like her legacy to continue by naming this building after Mrs. Eva Mack. Mrs. Mack dreamed of having a building, but the organization became a reality in 1983 with the construction of the office at 1600 North Australian Avenue in West Palm Beach, but the agency remained until 2018. Today, the organization has grown to a staff of more than 10, including a chief executive officer. The services have been expanded to Martin, Okeechobee, St. Lucie, and Indian River Counties. Satellite offices have been set up in Belgrade and Riviera Beach. Until her death in 1998, Mrs. Mack, who went on to be elected West Palm Beach's first black mayor, worked hard to help us become the local go-to organization in helping people learn more about the global disease and how to live with it. Gary Hawkins, 1500 North Congress Avenue, A15, West Palm Beach. I support the new community center being named as the Eva Mack Community Center. That's the last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Just hearing all those comments, I just, you know, sometimes these items come up. We don't have a lot of fanfare, a lot of debate on these things, but these are the seemingly small things that mean so much to a community. And so I just wanted to say thank you to administration, to the leadership, to staff, and to the community for bringing this forward. This is truly an honor to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Warren? No? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. I move that we approve Resolution Number 31221, declaring the name of the new HCD Community Resource Center to be the Eva W. Mack Community Hub.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.4, Resolution Number 317-21, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a voluntary compliance agreement between the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the city of West Palm Beach.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Jennifer Ferrell, Director of Housing and Community Development. As many of you know, the city of West Palm Beach is a recipient of federal funds through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a variety of housing and community development programs. And as a part of receiving those funds, or as a condition of receiving those funds, we are required to adhere to a variety of different compliance elements and a variety of different federal regulations that really govern the use of those funds. And one of those elements is that we are required to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and several fair housing and civil rights laws. I want to say it's been over 10 to 15 years since the city has been monitored under the Fair Housing and Civil Rights Laws, until just recently, where earlier this year, we were informed by the Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity, also known as FHEO, that we were going to review certain sections of our programs to determine if we were being in compliance with these specific provisions. Throughout the monitoring, there were certain areas that were identified as areas of improvement, and we sat down with the staff at HUD to negotiate a voluntary compliance agreement. And in essence, that compliance agreement, that's also known as a VCA, outlines various actions that we have to undertake over the next 18 months to resolve those findings and to really strengthen our programs. And I'll say this, from a department's perspective, we are always, we get monitored at least two to three times a year by different agencies, and we always welcome our monitorings and the areas for improvement, as they really do help us govern our programs better, bring these services forward to our residents, and really strengthen the delivery of services. So we don't necessarily see these as a negative, we see these as a way to simply become better. So with that said, this compliance agreement requires us to address four different areas of concerns. A limited English proficiency, we'll talk a little bit about all these areas, affordable housing, affirmative marketing, and citizen participation. So the first area, and the goal that we'll have to achieve through our VCA, is to assist with developing a limited proficiency plan that will allow residents that are non-speaking, non-speaking English residents, or residents that don't speak English, to really be able to access and participate in the funds or the programs that are funded through the federal funding sources. So they've asked us to review and complete an analysis to determine what ways we can expand upon our services and provide them to our LEP populations. They have access to develop a written plan so that we can modify some of our public hearings and comment periods, and really allow for that greater input from non-speaking populations. And they want us to submit these results and a copy of our plan to HUD. We have about 90 days to formally move forward and comply with this specific provision, and we have the staff internally in-house, and the ability to do that in-house, to comply with this requirement. We intend to work with the Office of Communications and with our community engagement supervisor to ensure that we put together a strong plan that this commission can support. The next area that we are looking at is to continue to encourage the development of affordable housing outside of areas of minority concentration. They've asked us to provide quarterly updates on various projects that the city is currently undertaking. They want us to continue to expedite the processing of building permits and development applications for affordable housing purposes. And they've also asked us to update them on the status of a current new project that's been acquired by Related, known as the St. Andrews Residence. I'll also talk a little bit about how we're already complying with a lot of the elements that is required under this agreement, one of them being the new plan that we adopted to incentivize housing in the downtown, which allows us to increase affordable housing opportunities outside of areas of minority concentration. And throughout the next 18 months, we'll be providing HUD with various updates as it relates to this specific section. The next area is affirmative marketing, and the purpose of having strong affirmative marketing and affirmative marketing tools is to ensure that we're promoting our different projects and affordable housing initiatives to members of protected classes. And how we're doing that, and how what HUD wants us to do that, is to ensure that the developers of arts on Broadway are affirmatively marketing their units to these populations, and to ensure that all of our projects moving forward have affirmative marketing requirements. One of the difficulties with the various programs that we manage is that we have various funding sources with a lot of different requirements. But what we do like to do is to take certain elements from different programs and use them as best practices. For example, having an affirmative marketing plan is something that we require in all of our agreements, whether they are HUD-funded or not. So whether it's city-funded or state-funded, we ensure that all of our developers adhere to this process. And again, we'll be providing HUD with information on our process, on our progress over the next 18 months. The next area is citizen participation, and they really want us to increase the participation of low moderate individuals in how we are planning and utilizing our federal-funded programs and activities. So what they have asked us to do is to ensure that in our required public meetings, which we have two per year, that we are targeting areas where, A, more than 50% of the residents are minority renters, or more than 20% of the residents are non-speaking, or speak English as a secondary language, or in areas where the average poverty rate is of 25% or higher, or areas where they're slated for economic development, and that's part of a greater plan. So a lot of this we're already doing, but they want us to greater emphasize on these particular areas. And the last thing is that they want us to amend our citizen participation plan. So we are currently, one of the areas that HUD requires us to do and to implement is to have a citizen participation plan, which pretty much details how we are going to engage our residents in our community planning and our programs, and the different elements of HUD, of our HUD-funded projects. So what they want us to do is to amend that plan to allow for virtual and in-person meetings, which we have been doing, but it's not necessarily detailed in our plan. They want us to identify community partners that we're going to consistently work with, and they want us to provide reports to HUD over the next 18 months to ensure that we're adhering to these specific provisions. Before I close, I do want to say that throughout this process, we had a great working relationship with HUD. We had several negotiation meetings and discussions. One of the times, they met with our mayor, and they were very, very impressed in terms of the many goals that we have and everything that we're doing to support affordable housing, and how equitable we're being in our process. They were blown away with our 503 initiative and how quickly we were able to accomplish that. They were very impressed with the mayor's racial and ethnic task force. So a lot of these things were already discussed, and they are very fully aware of all of the strides that we're making in our city. And personally, from my perspective, I do believe that moving forward with this... And personally, from my perspective, I do believe that moving forward with this compliance agreement is really just going to help us get better and take ourselves to a higher level. So with that, I respectfully recommend to approve Resolution Three-One-Six-Two-One, and I welcome any questions that this commission has.
Thank you very much.
That's my presentation. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioners? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation. I certainly appreciate wholeheartedly administration's commitment to affordable housing and taking a broad look at this issue. Throughout this presentation, there has been a lot of mention of the Arts on Broadway project, and I think as we move this forward, it would behoove us to update on that project. In particular, I think the only member of this dais that was here at the beginning of that project is Mayor James. So that project has been outstanding and has been financed since September. And so, for me, it's important that if we're putting these things into an action plan, that the action actually happens. So, you know, at a later date, if we can inform the commissioners, what is the actual shovel-ready in-ground date that that is going to happen? Residents are eager to see it happen, they've been waiting. So if we could get an update on that, that would be great. I don't know if it falls into one of your categories here, but we have the affordable home ownership opportunities on the table that we talk a lot about, too, and looking at wealth building within our community is the best way to do that, is to get people to own homes. So is that part of a strategy in our affordable plan that we're presenting here, or that doesn't belong in this particular plan because this is the voluntary plan?
This is a little bit different. This is just a voluntary agreement on certain areas. HUD did recognize, and again, they did compliment us for the various strides that we're doing as it relates to homeownership. We didn't want to include the things that we're already doing, even though some of them we did, because HUD wanted to ensure that we had them in place and that we kept updating them on it, but it wasn't something that they identified that we needed to improve on. So while it is a greater goal of our department and of our city and elements that we're working on, it's not necessarily applicable to this plan.
Thank you. And to my first question on the Arts on Broadway, I mean, staff has done everything they can to push this forward, administration has done everything they can to push it forward. Is that a developer update that we need to get to see what their status is and when they're moving forward?
I will tell you that we have been in discussions with their attorneys and our attorneys, and we're finalizing an agreement to bring forward to you, or actually for execution and a closing date of this month or next month. So I would be happy to come back at a work session that we can coordinate with city administration to give you a greater update and in more detail on where we are and where we're going.
Thanks.
And even in the interim, Jennifer, if you want to just set up individual meetings with the commissioners to give them that update so that they're not having to wait?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number Three-One-Six-Two-One.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no, opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point five, Resolution Number Three-Twenty-Eight-Twenty-One, approving a memorandum of understanding with Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University to operate community farms, urban market gardens, on city-owned properties.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Jennifer Ferriello, Director of Housing and Community Development, and it is really an honor of mine to bring forward to you a partnership for your consideration between the city of West Palm Beach and Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University, also known as FAMU, who is not only the third-largest historically black university in the United States, but it is the only public historically black university in the state of Florida. And what residents and many members of the public may not know is that FAMU is one of two Florida land-grant universities with a mission of teaching and performing agriculture-related research and activities and providing extension services to our residents, or to citizens. And under the last couple of months, we have been working closely with FAMU's staff to develop a memorandum of understanding in hopes to detail some of collaborative efforts that we'll take under FAMU's Cooperative Extension Program. And the overall goal is to provide various educational programs, jobs, and activities to our residents, and to establish three community gardens throughout the city in furtherance of goals, and hopefully to mitigate some of the food deserts within our city. And here with me, I'm happy to announce that we have various members of the FAMU staff, starting with Vonda Richardson, who is the Director of FAMU's Cooperative Extension Program, and she's here and will be assisting with this presentation, as well as Dr. Dremel Worthing and Mr. Trevor Hilton, who, if you don't mind standing so that you can be recognized, were also part of the FAMU staff. And now I'm going to allow Dr. Rich, I'm sorry, Mrs. Richardson, to talk a little bit about the Cooperative Extension Program at FAMU, what it all entails, and how our partnership, and what that could potentially look like.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor James and Commissioners. I want to thank the city administration staff for inviting us. We are definitely pleased to be here. Like Jennifer said, we are one of the two land-grant institutions here in the state of Florida, along with the University of Florida IFAS. And before I talk a little bit about extension, I want to just kind of give a background of the land-grant institution itself. And basically, these institutions were created, were designated by Congress to receive benefits of the Morrill Acts. Of course, Florida A&amp;M receiving benefits under the eighteen ninety Morrill Act, the Morrill Act of eighteen ninety, which we are considered an eighteen ninety institution. And Congress created these institutions so that practical, access to practical higher education could be accessible for working-class families. These institutions were endowed, first, teaching and the confering of agricultural degrees in the agricultural sciences and mechanical arts; number two, agricultural-related research; and then thirdly, extension and outreach, direct technical assistance to citizens in those states. Our programs are supported primarily through federal dollars. We are appropriated, they're called capacity dollars, authorized in the farm bill to conduct extension-related activities here in the state of Florida. We are the partner with University of Florida IFAS in the Florida Extension Service, and so Florida is fortunate to have two institutions to provide the services to its citizens. We focus, we have a statewide focus, and we work with all citizens, but that special emphasis on limited resource and underserved communities is primarily our focus. Historically, we operate in four major areas: agricultural and natural resources, 4H Youth Development, community resource development, and family consumer science, which used to be the former home economics. Traditionally, we're known, most people recognize cooperative extension in the agricultural sector, providing support, let me go to the next slide, support for small farmers. And here, we work directly with those farmers, or those individuals who are interested in becoming farmers, directly with enterprise development and securing resources to that aim. We also work in support of communities with various programs that engage job training through some of our job training certification programs, which is also part of a reentry program that we have, as well as landscape extension. We have faculty members that work with homeowner owners relative to those areas, and then more notably, in our community programs are our urban agriculture and community garden, of which Mr. Trevor Hilton is our, he is the one urban agriculture agent in the state, and hopefully, we will have two here in West Palm Beach. We're also engaged in, like I mentioned, community garden, as well as other community asset-building programs and direct technical assistance for residents, as well as community leaders. We also support families and individuals. Dr. Worthing chairs that, provides leadership for that particular program. We work directly with families, specifically in nutrition education, but also personal financial literacy, we have a homebuyer's program, as well as other programs that support the family, which is inclusive of senior programs. We have a very robust senior advocacy program. And then probably lastly, and one of, I guess, the ones that we really are proud of is our 4H Youth Development Program. And here, we are fostering positive relationships between adults and youth, as well as training those youth, educating those youth in areas that will propel them with life skills, career skills, that will make them productive citizens here in the state of Florida. Well, basically, what we're proposing in, well, programs and activities specifically, like I mentioned, for this particular MOU, we're looking at providing sustainable production practices for, through the garden sites, but we're also making sure that people are able to provide food for themselves, so they can come to these sites, they're trained, and they can either utilize those sites, or they can also, it also can be transferable to their home sites. What we're wanting to do is make sure that there's an affordable and secure source of food for persons in food deserts and low-income areas, low-resource areas. We are providing educational opportunities. We are an informal educational unit of the university. We consider ourselves the front door of the university, and so all of the things that are brought to bear there on campus, we're able to extend that in the community. That's the purpose of our extension activities. Job training and employment opportunities, as I mentioned, well, as we will discuss a little bit later, we do plan to provide some employment opportunities for citizens here in the West Palm Beach, in the city of West Palm Beach, specifically in the MOU? Let me go ahead and go ahead. Okay. Specifically in the MOU, some of the responsibilities that we will be, I guess, basically manage, working collaboratively to support the program goals and program development and implementation, based on what was set forth in there, and based on the programs that we've established would be pertinent for these communities. There'll be two positions that we will bring to the city. One will be a full-time faculty position, an extension agent position. It is a faculty line position, as well as an extension program assistant to help with nutrition education and the other family programs. We will provide funding in support of those persons that are hired here, whether, you know, all material supplies are there that's needed, travel, and any training that they require. Our leadership, Dr. Worthen and Trevor, will work with that person, providing oversight, training, and then offering any type of experiential learning for them, as well as clientele that they come in contact with. And of course, we would definitely, this is a partnership, we would share these findings, you know, with the city, and any type of educational activities that are conducted.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And yes, and we do definitely see this as a collaborative effort, and we really want to work with FAMU and with the city and with our residents and with members of the community on developing what are goals, what are some quantifiable objectives that we can have, what are some different programs that we want to implement? Mrs. Richardson, just discuss a variety of different programs, but what are the specifics of what we'd like to do, and how are we going to implement those moving forward? I'm going to touch this later on in my present, in our presentation, but a big aspect of how we're going to determine that is through having an extensive community outreach plan and making sure that we are engaging the residents on various levels, whether it's from the type of food that they'd like to see grown on the farm, or I'm sorry, on the gardens, or whether, what kind of programs they'd like to further enhance, really having our FAMU staff and the new staff that's coming on board, working with our team and Community Resource Center, and working with our housing folks to ensure that we're providing as many services to our residents and kind of bring that all together. But in terms of other responsibilities of the city, we're going to ensure that we provide office space so that FAMU and staff can have a space for operations. They are, we're also going to provide a license for them to use various sections of city-owned sites where those three community gardens are going to be located, which we'll talk about shortly, and then also provide and work with them on various volunteer opportunities for our residents, our nonprofits, and various businesses to be engaged in. So the community garden locations, when we were determining to see what areas of the city we wanted to have these locations, we wanted to make sure that we, they were in areas with high concentration of low-income households, to ensure that they had access and accessibility to the garden and to all of the elements that could come from that. So we have identified the Coleman Park Community Center as a location, the Pleasant City Multicultural Center, and a small location on Phipps Park. A little bit about that, so the location on Twenty-first Street, which is a location for the community, the Coleman Park Community Center, it'll be right behind the tennis courts, the location where we're going to have the community garden, and this area before was utilized as a teaching garden. So in essence, it is not going to disrupt the daily activities of the center. At the location on Spruce Avenue, which is the Pleasant City Gloria Y. Williams Multicultural Center, we are also going to be utilizing a vacant lot that's adjacent to that space, and that area was also utilized as a teaching garden. So again, it is not going to disrupt any of the services or potential programs that are being utilized at that location. The final location is at Phipps Park on South Dixie Highway, and it's going to be towards a vacant lot adjacent to the park, and it's near a warehouse section across the street, again, to the park. No services are currently being provided there, so there'll be no interference with any current city activities. So just a little bit of timeline and next steps. I wanted to be really, I didn't want to under, I didn't want to overpromise and underdeliver, so we wanted to be considerate of our timelines. So the first step is we want to make sure that we hire staff and that we develop the programming, the goals, and the activities that we want to undertake under this MOU. So again, we're going to be doing an extensive community outreach plan, we're going to be working with FAMU, with the new staff that's coming on board, and with the community to ensure that we have a solid plan in place for what they'd like to see on these particular sites. We want to work with the FAMU staff, and they were very gracious to allow us to utilize some resources so that we can have an infrastructure and a layout for the community garden. So we want to have all of that developed and underway in less than a hundred and twenty days. And obviously, we want to have all of the programs and activities fully launched for the community in a hundred and eighty days or less. Again, I don't, we're trying to keep this very conservative, as we want to make sure that we're delivering on the things that we're saying we're going to deliver on. So with that said, I respectfully recommend approval of Resolution Three-Two-Eight, approving an MOU with FAMU to operate community farms and urban markets on city-owned properties, and an approval of our MOU. And so with that, we will entertain any questions that this commission may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ferriello. To the representative from FAMU, do you have any other projects or initiatives in South Florida? Does FAMU have any other projects, any other presence down in South Florida?
No, we do not. We have had agents, because we have a statewide focus, we do have faculty that are campus-based that have been working down here in South Florida. As a matter of fact, years ago, when I was a marketing specialist, extension marketing specialist, we introduced some farm-to-school programming down here as well, but we don't have anyone specifically stationed. This will be the first time.
This will be the first?
This will be the first. And we'll be the second urban agent that we have. Mr. Hilton is the first in the un-county.
And it should not go unnoticed that this is the second major Florida educational institution that has shown an interest in West Palm Beach, and I think that speaks volumes about what is going on in our city. How many other cities or towns do you work with that have urban gardens, community gardens?
Well, this is.
Around the state?
Around the state. All of the counties that we do operate in, and right now, it's about twelve, where we have people who are actually designated, and this is their geographical areas. School gardens, community gardens, the one that Trevor manages in Tallahassee is the oldest in Tallahassee, the one down from campus on Orange Avenue. And so this is, this is a program that's, it predates me, and I've been there twenty-six years. So the gardening program is pretty robust. We pull a lot of expertise from campus, as well as community, because community residents have a lot to, you know, to teach us as well.
So I think it's safe to say this is not FAMU's first rodeo when it comes to operating community gardens?
No, sir. No, sir, not at all.
Thank you. We are honored and appreciate your interest in our city. Questions, comments? Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor, and this sounds like an exciting project. Thank you, staff, for working on it, and for FAMU for expressing an interest in working with the city of West Palm Beach. Just a quick question that I had, have we done any soil testing in any of those sites? Do we know, should we be doing any soil testing? Is that something that's contemplated? And if so, if there's remediation required, how is that going to work? Who's going to be responsible for doing that? Who's going to be responsible for paying for that?
We have a phase one. We have a Phase 1 currently underway for both of those sites. As of right now, just based on preliminary, there's no mitigation efforts that are need to, that need to be undertaken on these specific sites, but we have a second level of review that we're looking into. And that was a part of what we had discussed, to make sure that there are no concerns on the specific sites. So yes, those are underway.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi. I am honored to welcome FAMU to West Palm Beach. FAMU has a huge family in West Palm Beach.
Yes, I am aware.
It's a huge family, and a tremendous amount of support from our local community. And have you had the opportunity to tour the grounds?
Yes, yes, we've been here, we visited about a month ago, but we've been, we've been in discussions, and we've been looking at site plans since the summer, but we've been here, we actually looked. Trevor is our resident expert, and so he was here and actually looked at the sites and had some recommendations of how we could lay it out. So we have, we've done our homework.
So you've done site visits, and you have seen site plans, and you feel that the parcels that we've looked at are conducive to your ability to deliver all of these things that you've spoken about?
Yes, the sites relative to the gardening, the community garden programs, but the other programs are community-based programs. So we can go into schools, we can go into community programs, we can go, actually go into these communities and deliver programs. We take our programs to the people, and, but back to your original question, yes, the garden sites are conducive to teaching what we would need to teach for the residents, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation and for being here. You know, it's certainly an exciting program, and I know we're looking at some initial sites here. Two of the sites are within my own district and in areas that are completely needed to have fresh vegetables and food provided for the community. I've been to the Coleman Park Teaching Garden previously, and I know that this area expands that garden boundary, so we're looking at bigger and bigger areas. Is part of our MOU taking a look at the feasibility of these areas, seeing if this is enough? Do we need to identify more areas, whether it's an additional area in the same vicinity or in a different complete geographic location?
Commissioners, so yes, we didn't, in essence, we did not want to undertake so much, especially when you're starting a new program. We wanted to build it little by little. So we didn't want to buy more than we could chew. We figured we'd start with three, which is, you know, it's a handful, right? And so let us get that down-packed, let us make sure that those sites are successful before we look at adding additional sites. But yes, that is something that we are in discussions and something that we plan on further evaluating in the future.
And definitely, as people find out and they participate, the demand is going to be there, so we've got to be ready for it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much for bringing this opportunity to our city, and I was pleased to hear about the staff that you're bringing, the educational resources that you're bringing to our residents, and I was just curious if, will you be working directly with our staff? I know that we do a lot of community outreach through our sustainability e-newsletters and things like that, where it sounds like you'll probably be working with the neighborhoods that are nearby, but will it also get passed out to the rest of our residents?
Yes, yes, definitely. The partnership is initially, you know, with that staff, and it is a partnership. Those outreach activities that you're engaged in, we're there to support as well. And then as, like I said, we tend to be the best-kept secret on campus in a lot of places, and so, you know, once people start participating, they see the value in what, not necessarily what FAMU is offering, but what is being offered to them. It's a value to them. Interest, it actually grows. Demand gets, improves for it.
It won't be a secret down here, I promise you.
Mayor, have one follow-up.
Yes.
I'm curious if you've run into any security issues at any of your other locations? You know, I saw some of the locations, if they're behind a tennis court, it's not really in great view. Are we concerned about, you know, making sure that vandalism doesn't happen?
Well, what we, how we handle that is basically, we get community buy-in. And so the community residents feel like they are a part of it. It's not FAMU's, it's not the city's garden, it is that community's garden. And so hopefully, we will have volunteers. The people that we hire, we're hoping that they're indigenous to this area, and so, to these communities. And so we're hoping that the communities will, you know, will take ownership in it, and that's worked in the past. Of course, you know, sometimes you may have some of the four-legged, people, the four-legged vermin that come in, that you have, you have to make accommodations for them. You don't, you don't want to get rid of them, you just make accommodations for them. And then, you know, sometimes you have to make accommodations for those, the two-legged ones as well. So it works out. We've, like I said, we've done this for a while, and, you know, it works out. But the key to it is getting that community buy-in, so that they feel that the garden is theirs.
Commissioner, if I may add, just two comments to what Ms. Richardson was indicating. The first one is that, yes, we are going to have a very collaborative approach to this with our staff, really working with FAMU and overseeing the agreement, and it's going to be really the city and FAMU together on every step of the way throughout, you know, developing the program and implementation. So a lot of coordination there. This other part of it is, we're also going to be evaluating, as stated in the timeline, just the infrastructure needs and other things that we may need. If we need to purchase some cameras, we can do that. If we need to, you know, some fencing, or, we don't know, right? That's part of having this MOU finalized, but that is something that we're going to evaluate as we design these gardens moving forward.
Great, just want to make sure we keep our hard work safe. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. This is fabulous. I am so excited to hear about this project. Last year, when we were, had COVID relief teams, I was running the food team, and we were getting calls time and time again from people in the south end that were in particularly, you know, hoping that we could move some of our operations there because the need was so great. And so we did end up doing a lot of things in the south end, so I'm glad to see Phipps Park on this list. I'm wondering how many people will be typically served in each of these areas? I think when I look at the photos, they look kind of rather smallish gardens, and I think the need is really great. You're not going to have any trouble finding people who want to be a part of this. So I, you know, I'm wondering if there's, I don't know, room to grow in those gardens? If you, I know that this is your background, so is it, do you know how many people you would expect to be served? Is this the right size for now, or, you know, just so you can tell us a little bit about that?
Well, like Jennifer had mentioned, we wanted to start with something that we can manage, because when you start looking at larger acreage, you know, it's a lot of work when, in, that's involved. By that same token, a lot can be grown in a small, small area, and based on the production techniques that you're using, you could benefit a lot of, a lot of families, more than you would, you would think, on such a small area. What we would like to do is to be able to demonstrate some things that if we use it as a teaching garden, a teaching, a teaching resource, and they can take that back to their homes, whether it's using containers to grow the same crops, the media is the same, and the methods are the same. And so just being able to use it to expose people to being able to produce food for So it just depends on how big the community is. Typically, the size of the one at Coleman, easily 30 to 50 people, because you're talking about home consumption. You know, we're not necessarily looking at selling at the market level, but then here again, if they're, if they learn this technology, they learn these practices, that can be transferable, you know, it may be an opportunity for them to look somewhere else, somewhere in the county, or somewhere outside of the county, if they are desirous to become, we don't, we don't call them farmers anymore, we call them agro-entrepreneurs.
Uh-oh. Agro-entrepreneur, okay.
It makes, it's just a little sexier, that's all. Just makes farming a little sexy.
See, you can say that, I can't say that. Mr. President, and then.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you anticipate having signage at each of these locations to let people know what they're looking at?
Yes.
And that it's a cooperative program between the city and FAMU?
Yes, definitely, yes, we'll provide that.
Commissioner Warren.
Recognizing that FAMU is a historically Black college or university, although it's not officially a historically Black high school, in District 2, we have a high school called Palm Beach Lakes High School. I would love to see in the future that there's a relationship with Palm Beach Lakes High School and FAMU, and that that can foster a path towards higher learning. I think that would be phenomenal, a phenomenal outcome of this.
Definitely would. The youth component is part of all of our programs. We make sure that everyone is engaged in some type of youth engagement, and of course, with the 1890 scholarships, we will definitely bring our recruiters down to be able to bring students back to the hill.
Excellent. Any other comments? Well, certainly appreciate and welcome your interest in setting up an operation in West Palm Beach, Florida, and I expect nothing but the best and success. We do have two cards, Sandy Makovich and Stuart Bosley.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. This is needed in the city. Studies have shown that low-income communities are more likely to be affected by limited access to healthy foods. By supporting urban agriculture through the provision of city properties for gardening, residents will benefit from improved access to healthy food, lower rates of diet-related disease, improve economic health, revitalize communities, and opportunities for volunteering and community gatherings. City-owned lots located at 2147 Spruce Avenue, 1116 21st Street, and 4715 South Dixie to provide sustainable gardening, education, job training, and employment opportunities while making affordable produce available for local consumptions. This is a food desert. This is needed. What I don't understand, 1031-2021, the mayor, city administrator, and city commissioners received an email from Stuart Bosley, who started and ran for 10 years the Henrietta Farms and was doing everything the university said it would do. When Mayor James refused to continue the lease in the middle of the growing season, Mr. Bosley's email read, "Today marks the end of urban farming in the city of West Palm Beach. Henrietta Bridge Farm is permanently closed." Discussing this with a friend, I was told Mr. Bos, who ran Henrietta Farm, bringing fresh fruits and vegetables, had yard signs in the area supporting your challenger for mayor. Would you have people who look like you suffer because Bos didn't support you for mayor? Are you truly that vindictive, Keith?
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, Commissioners, City Administrator, visitors. All right, you know my story. I was a farmer here before anyone else. I invited FAMU 10 years ago to come down and join us, and before this all got to be crazy like this, I was told a story that the city was going to take over my farm and operate it, and that I would be working as a consultant, to be a liaison between FAMU and the farm. There was a gentleman who came as our new administrative, city, assistant city administrator, who is no longer here, and I don't know that he really made a contribution, but his biggest contribution was to reach out to FAMU after I told him what I wanted to do and get them involved. Now, you had an acre and a half of diverse agricultural plants, trees, flowers, banana plants, and 53 fruit trees on this property, where FAMU, all they had to do is come in with their crew and immediately implement all the things they're talking about now to implement this MOU. Now, look, I love my town. It's my second town. I'm a born and raised New Yorker, but I love this town, and I think that we should give FAMU a little more respect and consideration and not give them two pieces of property that you could put in this chamber here versus the one that they could have had before it was destroyed. It's a done deal now, but look, you have a well there, you have irrigation, you have security. This is a tough town up there, especially up in Pleasant City. Just last, last couple of days ago, someone was shot three blocks away from the, one of the locations. We have got to do better. The way this thing went down was wrong. I can't do anything about it now, but I'll do everything I can to help FAMU be successful with this, if they ask me. Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays to everyone.
Anything in the portal? All right, there are no other cards, nothing important? Any comments, questions from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 328-21.
Second.
Removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Welcome to West Palm Beach FAMU, thank you. Now going to public hearing, item 9.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 4968-21 regarding the city-initiated amendment to the city's comprehensive plan adopting the property rights element as required by Florida statutes.
Good evening. For the record, Alex Hansen with the Cities Planning Division. Just a brief reminder that the reason why this item is in front of the commission tonight is because this past summer, the state legislature approved new requirements that every municipality in the state needs to adopt a property rights element within its comprehensive plan. So this ordinance, again, is complying with that state requirement. The first reading of this item was on October 4th. Because this is an amendment to the comprehensive plan, the amendment has to be submitted to different state and regional agencies for their review. We did receive a comment from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, dining which they were suggesting a revision to some language associated with this amendment. We have made the revision, consistent with the comment, and again, the second reading will be complying with this new state legislation. From a timing standpoint, I want to remind everybody that failure to adopt the new property rights element would result in other amendments to the comprehensive plan being delayed or prevented from being processed. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We're good. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Ordinance Number 4968-21, amending the comprehensive plan to adopt a property rights element.
Is, has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It was moved and seconded, a discussion. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4968-21, and orders of City Commissioner of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, modifying the comprehensive plan to adopt the property rights element, declaring the proposed amendments to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing the conflict clause, the qualification clause, and the securability clause, providing effective date and for the purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hansen. Okay, we're moving into the quasi-judicial portion of the meeting. Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures. So we'll start with Commissioner Fox.
As to this matter, item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with the developer and representatives. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to this item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with the representative of the developer, I have, and the developer. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Mr. President.
Thank you. As to this matter, I have had ex parte communications with representatives of the developer, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. As to this item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with applicant representatives surrounding developers and community members. I have received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren. Thank you. Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. As to this matter 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with the applicant representative. I have received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Very good. Madam Clerk, can you swear in the witness, any witnesses, please?
Everyone wishing to speak on item 10.1, please stand and raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? May be seated.
Very good. Thank you. Item 10.1, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 4987-21 regarding rezoning from a multifamily high-density MF32 residential designation to residential plan development, RPD, including an acreage waiver to create the approximately 3.4-acre Flagler Towers, RPD, located at 1315 South Flagler Drive, and discussion of Resolution Number 310-21 regarding the establishment of the development regulations, including the site development plans and waivers for the Flagler Towers, RPD, which will consist of 109 residential units and approximately 3,878 square feet of food service use in a building containing two 352 feet and 3 inches tall towers. Okay, Mr. Warrior.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commission. For the record, Harvey Warrior of Schutzenbowen, on behalf of the applicant. We do have a long presentation tonight. We will move it as efficiently as we can, but as exciting and important as this project is for our city's future, it warrants a full discussion. As the mayor just pointed out, this is the first reading of a rezoning ordinance to rezone from MF32 to RPD, and a discussion about waivers, though you're not voting on the waivers tonight, but we will have a full presentation. Before I begin, though, I think it would be helpful to frame this in the historical context of the history of our city. If you go back about a century ago, we had some of America's greatest architects designing buildings in West Palm Beach. Those names like Addison Meisner, Marion Sims Wyeth, Maurice Fazio, Julian Abel, Horace Trumbauer built the best structures in our city. And then, for whatever reason, we went about 90 years or so without America's great architects being drawn to our city. We are very fortunate today to have some of the world's greatest architects designing buildings in our community, including one that you'll hear from tonight, the design architect for this project, Robert A.M. Stern. Next door to this proposed project is a recently completed Lord Norman Foster project. Most of you were at the groundbreaking a few weeks ago, two blocks away, for a David Childs project. We also have several Bernardo Fort Brescia projects in our community, and last month you heard a proposal for CMUD that includes the Herzog-Demirian Firm. So just pause for a moment, and let's enjoy the moment that we are on the receiving end of maybe the largest wealth migration in American history, lots of intellectual capital, two great universities, as the mayor pointed out, coming to our community. And once again, albeit a century later, we are attracting the nation and the world's best architects. And I'm honored and privileged to be a part of this, as I'm sure you are as well. So, in order, you will hear from Michael Harrison, who's the Senior Managing Director of Heinz Company, one of the world's great development firms, which is one of the two partners in this project. You will then hear from the other partner in the project, Rob Frisbee, Frisbee Group, which is actually a family in our community that is now on their fourth generation in our community. And they have pulled off some of the most remarkable game-changing projects in our community's history. For the benefit of those who were not here 25 years ago, when Clemata Street boarded itself up at 5:00 PM and everyone left our downtown, there was a developer named David Frisbee who moved here and decided to buy up much of the boarded-up, drug-infested, prostitution-infested Clemata Street. And he devoted his resources, literally living there, to radically transform our downtown. He brought the first Starbucks in the entire southeastern United States to Clemata Street. It is still there today. Tommy Bahama, Ann Taylor Loft, Banana Republic, national name-brand credit tenants to our downtown. He and his partner Andrew Aiken were the two people responsible, in my estimation, for radically transforming our downtown. They added a lot of value, a lot of tax increment, and in fact, it was your predecessors that took the tax increment generated by their bold move. And that is how you leverage to create City Place, now Rosemary Square. So Dave Frisbee was one of the visionary change agents in our city's history, and this is Dave and his family coming to bring us another game-changing project in our community's history. So you're going to hear from the young generation of the Frisbee family, Rob. You will then hear from Paul Whalen, who is the principal planner of Robert A.M. Stern, who has designed this project. I will then return to the microphone to talk about technical waiver issues. And finally, you will hear from Ben Carson Jr. about the MBE Hiring and Training Program that will be part of this project. Again, the request tonight is the first reading of a rezoning, and it's now my honor and privilege to introduce Michael Harrison, Senior Managing Director of the Heinz Company.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's a privilege to be here. We appreciate the opportunity for the Frisbee Group, Heinz, and our team to present a new project for downtown West Palm Beach called Flagler Towers. Before I make a couple of comments about Heinz, I want to share how we came to be partnered with the Frisbee Group for this exciting project. As Harvey mentioned, David Frisbee, the founder of the Frisbee Group, has been here for 25 years. What many people don't know is that before David came to West Palm Beach, he started his real estate career at Heinz. And that was about 40 years ago, and I had the good fortune to work with David before he left to start the Frisbee Group here in Palm Beach. As Harvey mentioned, he came here, he's done remarkable things in downtown West Palm Beach and throughout the Palm Beaches. And he and his former partner Andrew Aiken were both Heinz employees before they came here. Given our long history together, when David approached us about partnering with them for this project, we were very excited and thrilled to be here with you tonight to present our capabilities as well as our project. By way of introduction, Heinz is a three-generation privately-held real estate development and investment management firm. Founded in 1957 by Gerald Heinz, we have nearly 5,000 employees located in 25 countries around the globe. In our 64-year history, we've developed more than 500 million square feet of projects, housing, office, industrial, retail, and mixed-use projects. For those of you that are not familiar with Heinz, or that might have thought we were part of a ketchup company before tonight, I want you to know that Gerald Heinz is widely credited as being the first developer in the United States to marry world-class architecture with commercial development. Harvey mentioned this earlier, that we have Robert A.M. Stern here with us tonight. Heinz has worked with dozens of world-class architects, including Ramza, Frank Gehry, Caesar Pelli, Philip Johnson, and Sir Lord Norman Foster, to name a few. In our industry, the equivalent to the Academy Awards is the Urban Land Institute Global Awards of Excellence. As you can see from this slide, Heinz has won this award 15 times. That's nearly three times as many times as any other developer. Notably, and of particular interest as it relates to Flagler Towers in West Palm Beach, many of these projects are located in secondary and tertiary markets such as Minneapolis, Detroit, and Oklahoma City, where the addition of these projects helped define those city's skylines. Also of note is that while he was at Heinz, David Frisbee was responsible for two of these projects. I've also had the privilege to work on two of them, including one with David called One Detroit Center. Lastly, you'll note that the note says here that we've been honored 15 times with this award, but there are only 14 projects shown here. And that's because the ULI selected Gerald Heinz, the individual, to be awarded this prestigious award, and he's the only person to ever receive it. That brings me back to Flagler Towers and West Palm Beach. We consider it a privilege to partner with the Frisbee Group, who brings 30 years of local knowledge and commitment to quality in this community, and combine it with Heinz's six decades of global excellence, with the intention of delivering a world-class timeless project for the city of West Palm Beach and its residents. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Rob Frisbee to introduce the Frisbee Group as well as to present the project.
Good evening, and thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Rob Frisbee with the Frisbee Group, and I'm here with members of my family, my colleagues, and our incredible design team. We are excited to share our reimagination of two former Palm Beach Atlantic University dormitories, which are located on the waterfront along South Flagler Drive, representing one of the last and most valuable waterfront sites in this part of town, and which currently isn't on our tax roll. We are here tonight because we believe this is a great investment opportunity from a financial standpoint, but we are also here tonight because we think this opportunity represents a great investment in our city and in our future. That type of outward thinking, ensuring that we are not only creating value for ourselves, but also the surrounding community, is inherent in our family values and business ethics, and indicative, as Harvey mentioned, of the first investment our family made in West Palm Beach over 30 years ago, when my uncle, Dave Frisbee, led a charge to revitalize our downtown and bring vitality and safety back to Clemata Street. Dave and his partners worked to aggregate a critical mass of properties, and through thoughtful design and programming, they added mixed uses, including residential and upper floors, and transformed the corridor with leading retailers such as Ann Taylor, The Gap, Tommy Bahama, and one of the first Starbucks in the southeast. That same level of innovation and outward thinking is what we hope to bring to the reimagination of Flagler Towers, and it's why we've assembled a world-class design team to help us rethink vertical development in our city. Namely, instead of following the standard tower-on-a-plinth scheme where the vertical elements are the main focus, we have decided to prioritize the human scale and the ground plane, and to create a three-level podium that engages the public realm with townhouses, public plazas, and a café, and which transitions into the vertical components of the design. We are honored to work with Robert A.M. Stern Architects on this project, more generally known as Ramza. Ramza is famous for designing buildings that improve neighborhoods with iconic architecture that is more walkable and comfortable at the street level. Ramza is also a leader in furthering a sense of place and community through their extensive knowledge and experience designing leading cultural, academic, and residential buildings. And that insight into academia, led by their eponymous founder, Robert Stern, who was the dean of the Yale School of Architecture for over two decades, is going to play an integral part in the design where we share a unique proximity to several cultural institutions, including Palm Beach Atlantic University. Ramza has been very successful at creating value in communities. 15 Central Park West is a great example of a Ramza building in New York City that brought tremendous value to its neighborhood. By elevating prices on the Upper West Side, and for the first time, they were equal or greater than prices on the Upper East Side. And we think those same value drivers inherent in the timeless Ramza design will translate to our neighboring properties here in West Palm Beach. We've rounded out our leading design team with Stan Tech, Pembroke &amp; Ives, Urban Design Studio, SMI Landscape Architecture, Cozentini, Thornton Tomasetti, and Kim Lee Horn. Additionally, we've worked hard at community outreach and early engagement. To make sure that we are informing our neighbors at every step of the design process, we've had over 27 presentations to over 150 attendees, and we've received over 70 letters of individual support. We've also reached out to all of our neighboring institutions. We've given 14 such presentations to over 50 attendees and received over 20 letters of institutional support. That represents 100% of the institutional property owners within our 500-foot notice boundary. Our citywide outreach program included speaking directly with just under 1,500 individuals across the city. Of those we connected with, 76% who made a decision about the project support it, and 24% asked for follow-up communication, which we provided. Historically speaking, this represents overwhelming support for such a meaningful project. Additionally, we've had extensive communication with our northern neighbor, a to-be-developed project called Forte, being developed by Two Roads. Over the last five months, we've engaged with Forte to explain to them and share with them our thoughtful design process, to ensure they understand that every step of the way, we've been making certain that we aren't just creating one successful project, but that our design is elevating the values for their building and for our other neighbors. Our immediate neighbor outreach and support includes Palm Beach Atlantic University, Family Church, the Norton Museum, Memorial Presbyterian Church, LaClara, Norton Park Place, the Lake Worth Pioneers Association, and residents of the Bristol and the Trianon, all of which are supporters of our project. And as you can see on this slide, they do a great job of insulating our project. We've also had incredible collaboration with city staff, and we want to thank city staff for helping us to address over 200 constructive comments over the last five months, which have resulted in a project that we think is going to be innovative and leading in our city. And lastly, we want to highlight the unanimous planning board approval we received in October. This slide highlights several quotes from the planning board members recognizing the thoughtfulness of our design and community-minded progress. And with that, I'd like to introduce Paul Whalen, who heads up the Ramza design team.
Thank you, Rob, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about our process and our design, which we're very proud of and proud to be here to show you this evening. Let's see if I push the right button here. Okay. First, I'm going to talk to you about the site, and then I'm going to talk to you about the design of the project itself. Here you see a kind of a long-distance view of the skyline of West Palm Beach as it sits on the intercoastal, a line of towers that forms an esplanade in a gently-rolling curve. You can see Trump Plaza in the center, One West Palm on the right, and where Flagler Towers would be located on the left side, sort of rounding out the smooth curve of the In our neighborhood, this line of buildings defines the waterfront edge of West Palm Beach, south of the bridge, which will be punctuated by Flagler Towers. The project is located at the intersection of two important open space systems, the Greenway of South Flagler Drive, you can see the north-south arrow on the image, and Norton Gallery Park, which goes east-west. The project is insulated by its unique proximity to cultural institutions to the west and north, a tall development to the north, the intercoastal waterway to the east, and Norton Gallery Park to the south. Positioning the Flagler Towers site is an ideal location for vertical growth. The existing site conditions are incongruous with what we think of as urban planning, sound urban planning principles. Existing site is dominated by curb cuts, asphalt parking, and a lack of pedestrian access that detracts from the adjacent community. These images show you what I'm referring to, all the asphalt, and it's basically all asphalt and cars, not very pedestrian-friendly. And more images showing you more of the same, and in particular, the poor gentleman on the lower right walking down the street because he can't really find a comfortable sidewalk to walk on. So the design evolution. After carefully considering our site conditions and the context of the surrounding neighborhood, we worked hard to formulate a design that actualizes the allowable density in the most desirable way, not only for future residents of the site, but also for neighbors and the surrounding community. We want to share this thoughtful process with you now by beginning with an overview of the early design evolution. In our minds, and I think in most people's minds, the value of land increases the closer you get to the waterfront. So naturally, we began the process by creating a design that located most of the mass of the building close to the intercoastal, while positioning the front setback off South Flagler Drive... Drive, still well within the code requirements. While in theory, this appeared to be an excellent scheme, we recognized that we could provide more southern light and air for our northern neighbor, Forte, and better balance the massing on the site for the pedestrian experience. We went on to a curved design, which highlighted the ability of the site to fully utilize the open space afforded by the adjacent Norton Gallery Park to the south by orienting the massing southeast, but again, we recognized similar opportunities to create more southern light and air for our northern neighbor, and better balance the massing on the site for that pedestrian experience that's so important to us. We went on to an S-shaped scheme, which maximized the linear frontage over the park and the southeastern views to the intercoastal and the ocean. While the massing began to balance more favorably over the site, and the buildings naturally became less massive from a pedestrian perspective, the elongated linearity of the designed massing continued to block southern light for our northern neighbor. As our study evolved, and we continued to seek a design of enlightened self-interest, we began to actually pull the massing apart into two towers. The early massing evolved thus from maximizing waterfront proximity to creating a balanced site prioritizing the pedestrian experience and maximizing light, air, and sightlines for our project and our neighbors. And so we ended up with a two-tower scheme, as you see here on the site plan, that real allocates the massing into two more elegant forms. We pushed 50% of our entire massing completely west of Forte, our northern neighbor, and as a result, they are impeding a greater percentage of our views of the water than we are of theirs. While the west tower could have been located within 25 feet of the South Flagler property line to meet code, or 70 feet from the property line to meet staff requests, we placed our western tower as far west as the site allows, which is between 344 feet and 377 feet from the South Flagler property line. There are two numbers there, by the way, because there's a range, because our tower steps back, it's wider at the base and narrower at the top. Counterintuitive to the waterfront proximity value principle, this placement better serves to balance the massing of the site, bringing vitality to the western edge and treating the west side more equally to the east, while moving massing away from the more highly-traffic The balanced tower placement separates the massing into two more approachable forms. Additionally, the setback of the eastern tower is between 117 feet and 150 feet off South Flagler, significantly greater than the 25-foot code requirement, as well as the 70-foot staff request, which serves to further remove both towers from the public The separation of our massing into these two more slender forms also maximizes light and air, as well as direct south light for our general neighbors and for our proposed buildings. We've located our front door, as well as our entry drive, along the northern boundary. The drive is lined with a lush canopy of native sea grapes that separates the site from the Forte site just to the north, and extends Greenway, currently proposed by that northern neighbor, Forte, and privately connects Flagler Drive on the east to Curie Crescent on the west. We have, this is where we're locating our, what we call our motor court, by the way, which comes off of that drive, and this truly is a front door to our project, which we're facing Forte, and this is an image, an early image of what that motor court is going to look like. It's going to be a beautiful court, this whole drive is going to be beautiful, and so this is an example of what the folks in the Forte building will be seeing when they look over to this project. We're trying to be good neighbors. The project is innovative in its ability to successfully prioritize the pedestrian experience in a vertical development. The project aspires to feel significantly smaller than many shorter buildings due to its human-scaled urbanism and architecture, starting at the ground plane with the landscape and with the design of the podium levels. This continuous urbanism will improve the street-level experience and will serve to pull the waterfront pommade across Norton Gallery Park to the Norton Museum, and vice-versa, it will draw pedestrians from South Olive Avenue towards the water, strengthening the connection between a Virgin Arts District and the South Flagler waterfront. Clearly, we're interested in urbanism here, and not just in bringing a bunch of new product to West Palm Beach. Here you see on the left the number of curb cuts that currently exist on the site, which will be reduced from seven, such as you see on the left, to four in our proposed scheme. By doing that, we will leave three of the most important surrounding public streets uninterrupted for pedestrians. You can see the yellow line wrapping around three streets, indicating where that uninterrupted walkway for pedestrians will be located, which will be pleasant, but also safer. We're also surrounding the site with abundant landscaping and the widest sidewalks in the neighborhood, many of them 10 feet wide, to enhance that pedestrian experience. Baby trams will be able to pass each other quite easily. The site faces three important streets, presenting a challenge to any design team, but because our team loves community-making, we saw it as a great responsibility and an important opportunity. We rejected the traditional tower-on-a-base concept with its louvered parking, ventilation, and obvious parking space. Rather, our response is to disguise the parking and line these streets with active uses, including a park, a public plaza, a café, and a street of townhouses. The architectural variety that supports this blend of uses will result in a project that creates the comfortable, human-scaled urbanism that can be found only in the most successful The existing site along South Flagler Drive is autocentric, with an abundance of asphalt and narrow sidewalks. What we're proposing, you see here in a partial perspective on the right, and a section on the left, is a 70-foot setback, which will give space for a new waterfront park, the stepped waterfront park, a higher level which will allow views down below, layers of trees, and two rows of trees, creating a shady, providing a shady environment for the sidewalk. This is on the northern edge of that eastern end of our block, and then at the southern end of that street, if you can see here on the section on the lower right, the section cut through the site, we're proposing where South Flagler Drive meets Norton Gallery Park, a series of terraces that will step down to a public plaza, and the space will act as a vestibule to the expanse of Norton Gallery Park, a vestibule to pedestrians, for instance, who are walking down along South Flagler, a notice that something special is just about to happen with the wonderful Norton Gallery Park, especially as it's going to be developed in the future. In doing so, we will provide a human-scaled transition from the building to the street level, with shady spaces and sunny spaces, a plaza that will feel truly public and inviting to all, with seating, a central fountain, vine-covered walls, a place to be enjoyed by residents, neighborhoods, neighbors, everybody. Currently looking along Diana Place on the south side of the site, pedestrian pathways are limited, and the site is dominated by parking. What we're proposing is a project where parking is hidden by three stories of townhouses, and an uninterrupted layer of landscaping, landscaping trees, including buttonwoods and royal palms, as were recommended by city staff, and you see a section on the left going from the townhouses, you can see on the far left, to landscaping in front of the townhouses, a palm, a sidewalk, and a buttonwood. Unlike typical taller projects, we're going to provide a variety of highly detailed residences at the street level, for easy connection and communication between residents and neighbors. The concept also provides eyes on the street, a concept popularized by famous urbanist James Jacobs as a recipe for successful neighborhoods that feel safe. Of course, we're going to have people at the top, too, but we think it's very important to get people at the bottom really connecting to their neighbors. On South Olive Avenue to the west, the existing sidewalks are narrow, and the street largely devoid of activity. What we're planning is a residential entrance, and the outdoor seating to a proposed café to activate the street, and able together with an enormous relocated live oak, provide a pleasant environment at all times of day, especially, I'm thinking, in the afternoon, when that sun gets really hot, you'll be able to sit and have a coffee under this wonderful The human-scale architectural elements that I've just outlined to you at the base will connect the towers to the surrounding streets, because the height of these buildings are essentially, they're very similar to the height of a house, and to the other surrounding buildings which are low, while the towers will rise in a series of comfortable steps, creating outdoor terraces for residents, and open sightlines for surrounding buildings, surrounding neighbors, while sculptural crowns will mark the building's presence on the West Palm Beach skyline. The articulation of the building's facade will complement the architecture of nearby residential neighborhoods, such as El Cid, by incorporating many of their features, including a variety of materials and textures, engagement with the street, with through retail, lodges and pergolas, the integration of landscape and architecture, balconies and bay windows, and distinct memorable entrances. At the building's base, the project will feature windows and bays, balconies, lodges, and clearly-defined entrances that express the variety of the residences within. Crowns of both towers will reprise the scale of the street, because they're about the same height as those townhouses, as they mark this important location with sculptural features that we think of as a gift to the city's skyline, because they will be memorable and will be beloved, we believe. The result will be a seamless continuity of residential urban scale at the base, up through the crowns, and I want to underline residential urban scale. It's hard to make build taller buildings that have a great residential urban scale, but that's something we love to do. And this design will become a modern landmark that will contribute to the developing skyline of West Palm Beach. But in the end, we're confident that the building will be best known for its great street fronts, which will be experienced on a day-to-day basis as a welcoming human scale, and could serve as a way forward for this rapidly-developing neighborhood. Thank you, and now, Rob, I believe, is coming up again?
We, I just want to take a minute to review with you all the tower placement study and analysis that we've done, and I know Paul just did a great job and touched on some of these concepts, but we thought that it would be important to highlight them again in response to some comments that were made by our northern neighbor, Forte, namely their request that we push our towers as far west on our site as possible. And so to begin that study, we looked at our massing being pushed on the eastern boundary so that they are compliant with the 25-foot code-required setback, and we use that kind of as our baseline, thinking that would be in the best interest of our building, but now let's redesign the project, understanding all of the extenuating circumstances in the neighborhood. We then looked at pushing the buildings west to the 70-foot staff-requested setback, and ultimately, we looked at pushing them as far west on the site as we could, which is currently shown in our current design iteration. And here you can see that the western tower is pushed back between 377 feet and 344 feet, and the eastern tower, 150 feet to 117 feet, and the eastern tower is pushed back as far as it can without infringing on our motor court, which is just to the west of that eastern tower. Additionally, we just wanted to highlight again that our building, as it rises, becomes more slender and elegant. There are four steps in the building, as it starts at 117 feet, and it opens up to 150 feet off of South Flagler on the upper penthouse levels, creating greater view corridors, again, for our neighbors at their higher, more valuable levels. And additionally, we think it's important to highlight that Forte's, that Forte site is not a true waterfront site, but rather a flaglot. There is a blocking site immediately east of the Forte property, precipitating their flaglot orientation and the design of their setback off South Flagler Drive to the building's current location. This is a self-inflicted hardship, as you can clearly see the building footprint can't squeeze any further east. And we mention this in a constructive manner, to suggest that it would be logical for Forte's primary concern to be the potential for a development on the true two waterfront sites directly in front of their building. And if Forte were to purchase that blocking site, they could move their building east, in line with our building, as shown here on this slide. They could also move it further east, in line with the 70-foot staff-requested setback, again, as shown here on this slide. And lastly, they could propose to move it even further east to the 25-foot code-required setback. Any of these positions, we would be in support of. And with that, I'll hand it over to Harvey.
So this is the less exciting portion of the presentation, which was left to me, and that is to discuss the variance request. So the request in front of you this evening is a rezoning from MF32 to RPD, together with 12 waivers, which, again, you are not voting on that tonight, you are voting solely on the first reading of the ordinance for the rezoning. However, to give you a full picture of the project, which I think will better inform your voting on the first reading of the ordinance, I'm going to go through each of these variance requests. An RPD, of course, is a planned development, and a planned development, I'll read the intent portion only to you, the intent of this section is to encourage, through incentives, the use of innovative land planning and development techniques to create more desirable and attractive development in the city. And that's precisely what was shown to you. It is a innovative use of land, I don't think found anywhere else in this city, that allows a more efficient use of very scarce valuable land to deliver the same benefit to our community, but utilizing less land to do so. So let's begin with the first waiver request, and that is a reduction in the minimum area required for an RPD. Under your code, you need a 10-acre minimum. I don't think anyone in this room can remember the last time there was a 10-acre project that qualified for an RPD. Sort of an archaic part of the code should probably be amended. This was put in our code decades ago, when we had green space that could be developed. We're now at a point, of course, certainly east of I-95, where that's not possible to assemble that much land, so every project, in my 20-plus-year memory of being in front of this commission, required a waiver, including our three peer projects nearby, Forte, Bristol, and Leclara. So what this illustrates is our waiver request is less than the waiver request of our peer group that was granted by this commission in the past, simply because we have more acreage. We have 3.4 acres. That is our first waiver request. This requires elements such as particular circumstances justify the reduction. That circumstance is, there is no additional land that we could acquire to decrease the waiver request. We are completely hemmed in, this site is completely hemmed in, by other privately-owned property that is not available for sale, and the city-owned Norton Gallery Park. The requirements for residential planned development zoning and the benefits to be derived from such zoning can be derived in a lesser area, and I think that the Ramsa description of our design, what we're achieving through innovative design on a smaller piece of land, than what would have traditionally been done decades ago with sprawl, which we've fortunately learned that lesson, that building horizontally is not better. In fact, that has had some, you know, pretty significant negative ramifications for the state of Florida. So we are developing that vertically, but with a human scale on the ground plane. And the third requirement, permitting such lesser area for residential planned development zoning, is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Not only is it in conformity, it furthers a number of elements, objectives of the comp plan, namely utilization of scarce resources, scarce land, efficient use of land, economic development. So we meet all three of those criteria. Our second waiver request is a configuration of loading, and this, which we enjoy the full support of the city transportation staff, but this prevents the need for an additional curb cut. Let me try to describe how this would work. For your loading and unloading, the code request that you drive in, internal to the site, unload, and then exit somewhere else on the site, so that all of that loading is accomplished internally without backing out onto the right-of-way. We could do that, however, we would have We could do that, however, we would have to punch a hole somewhere else in this project, which would completely defeat the purpose that Paul Whalen described to you, which is an unfettered, 1,000-plus lineal feet of pedestrian area from our entrance on the northern property boundary on Flagler Drive, all the way across Diana Place and up Olive Avenue. As Paul mentioned to you, this was quite a design challenge. If you look at our peer group along South Flagler Drive, they all have one front door, Flagler Drive, that they need to design around. We had three front doors that we had to design around, three public rights-of-way, and our goal was to make that pedestrian-friendly, not creating conflict between vehicles and human beings. And to accomplish that, we tried to put all of the traffic in this northwest corner, which is Curry Crescent. And as you will see from several of our other variance requests, they're all occasioned by this design philosophy. We do not want to punch another hole into the public right-of-way, and staff agrees with us, it is not a heavily-traveled area and adequate for this waiver. A corollary to that waiver is waiver request number three, which is the number of access points. Paul Whalen told you there are seven there presently. Our code and our planning philosophy in this city, as you know, is to not have a lot of curb cuts, so we have reduced it from seven to four, three of which, which are the one circled in red in the lower half of your image, those are existing, those are not moving. The one that we're adding is to accomplish what I just described, and that is to get all vehicular traffic off of that 1,000-lineal feet of contiguous pedestrian safe zone down Flagler Drive, across Diana Place, and up Olive Avenue. So to do that, we had to put another access drive on Curry Crescent. Again, this enjoys your staff support. It's a good planning technique and good engineering technique. It actually services the smallest portion of the project, which is an underground segregated parking garage that houses less than 20% of the parking on the site. The arrows here and here, that is the main ingress egress points for the project. This is the loading and unloading. This is for a smaller underground garage. Waiver number four is also interrelated, it's corollary to the last two waiver requests. And that is, your code provides a requirement for buffer strip interruption. The buffer strip, quoting from your code, shall not be interrupted at more than 20% of the required length to provide vehicular ingress and egress. Well, by design, this is very intentional, we are putting all of these vehicular access points in one location, far away from public view, far away from the pedestrians. And in doing so, we created another waiver request, which, again, your staff supports, and it's part of the design philosophy. I will also note, there are only two parties affected by all of these waivers, us, the applicant, which is seeking the waiver request, and Memorial Presbyterian Church, which is right here, which has submitted a letter of support for this issue, for the entire project and the requested height. And I think they have their board chair here tonight to speak directly to this issue. Our fifth waiver is also related to the same set of circumstances, and that is the separation of access points. So let's take these one by one. Your code requires that the minimum separation distance between access points shall be 125 feet. In the upper right-hand corner of this image, this demonstrates the separation between Forte's driveway, or their nearest driveway to us, and our driveway is 77 feet, which is not 125 feet. That is what occasions the waivers request, the waiver request. That is an existing condition. Both of those driveways exist there today. We are not proposing to put them any closer together. We are not proposing to create any more of those. The same set of facts exist on the west side. This is an existing driveway, and this is an existing driveway. They are currently just under 24 feet apart. We are not proposing new ones. We are not proposing to put them any closer. It's an existing condition. The only addition that we are creating is here, which, again, is caused by our strong desire, and I think your staff's desire, to leave all of this unimpeded, with no vehicles entering or exiting from our three sides of public right-of-way architecture. So that triggers all of these, what I consider minor de minimis waiver requests, again, all of which are supported by your staff. Now let's move out of the realm of those issues into another issue that is created by a nuance in your code, and that is the maximum wall height on a side setback. So this northern property boundary between our proposed project and Forte is considered a side setback, and there is a maximum wall height of six feet on a side setback boundary. We exceed that in the red rectangular boxed area. So we do not exceed it here, we do not exceed it here, but for about 68% of that property boundary, we do. Let me explain why we do. This is a cross-section of our project on the right half of the screen and the approved Forte project on the left half of the screen. This is the property boundary, circled in red is the waiver request. So we have, and in the upper right-hand corner, you can see where this, this is the easternmost point at which this problem begins. We have a natural elevation rise of seven and a half feet from Flagler Drive to Curry Crescent that we must deal with. We have a FEMA height requirement that we must deal with. And we and your staff would like to build a building that is built at a height that is resilient, not just to meet today's FEMA code, but to meet the next century-plus of use, given the current condition of global warming and sea level rise. So this is a much higher elevation here. I tell you that because with that higher elevation, we have to create a driveway that connects Flagler Drive to Curry Crescent that goes up a hill. Part of it natural, part of it FEMA and design-created. Well, to do that, we have retaining walls underground that hold back our project from our neighboring project. Well, the nuance in your code is the entire wall is measured, whether it's visible above ground or not, and that is where we exceed it. To compound the problem, your code also requires a certain height of wall above ground on a property line called a crash wall or a safety wall, so that people, vehicles do not fall over the side into another retained project. So logic would dictate that the more important part of the code to meet is this safety wall meeting the required height. But when you do that and add it to the subterranean portion of the retaining wall, it exceeds the code requirement, thus the waiver request. Now this moves the red line a little further west, and this is the apex of the problem. This is where the greatest point of this wall height waiver occurs. And it now is a 14-and-a-half-foot wall, but again, the only portion that is visible is the safety wall that is required by your code. Everything else is underground, it's a retaining wall. So I don't think there is any dispute that this is a necessary waiver in order to meet the existing city code safety requirements. We have a very similar situation, listed as a separate waiver, but it is the nearly identical situation, and that is a wall that retains, you can see the cross-section here, retains a portion of the site, and it also requires a safety wall above ground, which allows this layer of landscaping to be placed. Were that wall not there, this landscaping would not be possible. Again, supported by staff, meets all other code requirements, and in fact, it is in meeting the other code requirement that it triggers this waiver. Now, waiver eight, and I've taken these waivers in the same order as your staff report. I will characterize, out of the 12 waivers, 11 of them are de minimis, you know, routine nickel-and-dime type of waivers. Waiver eight is the one that I'd like to spend the time on, because this one is what the public knows as a height waiver. Technically, it's not a height waiver, it is a side setback waiver, because the way height is denominated in this part of the city, which is unlike the DMP, where it is in stories, and it is unlike Seamud, for example, that was here a month ago, which is denominated in feet, there is no ultimate height limitation in this part of the city. You can build as much height as you have land, because height is governed by two feet of height for every one foot of side setback. So if you had 100 acres of land, you could build a really tall building. So what we're not talking about is height and feet. What we're really talking about is the side setback waivers, of which we are seeking two. So I'm going to try to break this down to you in many different ways, and I think they all arrive at the same conclusion. And that is that we are seeking equal to or less of a side setback waiver than our peer group, Forte, Bristol, and Leclerc on South Flagler Drive, granted by this commission previously. So the first way we're going to look at it is in building height per acre. And of course, this is favorable to us because we have more land than our peer group. If you look at the acreage of the Bristol, Forte to our north, Leclerc to our south, versus the side setback waiver that was granted by this commission, we are seeking less height per acre. You can see highlighted in blue here, 103.5 feet of height per acre, with a base building height of 352 feet. That is less than half of the waiver that Forte, our neighbor to the north, received. They had far less acreage. We are just a little bit over the height per acre for the Bristol, because they had a larger acreage, and we are under Leclerc. So you can, I'll give you a moment to absorb this. These are the building heights of each of the projects. Ours is proposed, and this is the approved height per acre. You can see what the average of these three are, it's 142 feet of height per acre. We are far beneath that. Let's look at it a different way. We are the beneficiary of having a 2.3-acre public green space adjacent to us on our south side, which provides a lot of breathing room for our project. It effectively adds nearly another two and a half acres to the canvas on which RAMSA was able to design. And it allows us to scoot this western building, which is completely behind the Forte project all the way to the southern boundary, which does several things. One, it utilizes the benefit of this big, open, breathing space. Number two, it creates that ground-level pedestrian experience that RAMSA was intentionally trying to create. So when you walk around this project, folks, you feel like you're walking around Magnolia Court, a block away, a three-story urban townhouse project, and it's only if you step back very far away can you feel the height of the building, which is unlike the Bristol, Leclerc, or Forte, all great projects, but when you drive by them, you feel the height. There is no ground-level design experience for the pedestrian or the vehicle. Let's dive into this, analyzing it a different way. On the top half of your screen is the Forte project approved. Those red numbers and arrows illustrate the side setback waivers that they were granted. The bottom half of your screen, in the blue, are the side setback, the setbacks for our project, together with the two side setback waivers. So let's first talk about feet in this chart. You'll note that we are requesting a side setback waiver on the north and one on the south, none on the east or west, we meet those. Our peer group, by the way, all required three waivers, we are requesting two waivers. In hard numbers, our average over our four sides of the project is an 88-foot waiver, less than all of our peer group. The total height of the, or the grand total of the setback waivers for our project is less than our peer group. If you look at that by percentage instead of hard numbers, in the graph at the bottom, we can break it down even further. This is an interesting analysis. Our north setback waiver varies between 77% and 85%, depending which way you want to look at it. If you want to look at it strictly by the code, because our parking garage, subterranean, is 15 feet off the property line, we are required to measure our side setback request from that 15 feet, which is completely underground, visible by no one. If you were to measure it logically, which I think is the intent and purpose of the code, for setbacks from your neighbor, it's actually 41 feet from the property line to the tower. So I've shown this two different ways. One is an 85% side setback waiver request, if you utilize the 15-foot side setback underground, if you want to do it what I think is, you know, maybe more commonsensical, it's a 77% waiver. Look at this big number, we have 91% here on our south. Again, that was by design. It was to put those townhouses right up on the sidewalk to create human activity on the sidewalk. That is completely mitigated by a two-and-a-half-acre green space to the south. But note in here this 93% number. We're not asking for the greatest percentage waiver this commission has ever granted. That was already granted to our neighbor, Forte, with a 93% setback waiver, which is right here, where they are only 10 feet separated from the dentist office. Again, had this property been acquired, and it's still for sale today, by the way, you can go buy it today, this could have been moved much further east. So as you break this down, our percentage of waiver, side setback waiver request, is 44%, less than Forte, less than Leclerc, and just slightly more than Bristol. Our total request, at 176%, is less than Forte by quite a bit, less than Leclerc by quite a bit, and almost identical, little bit above Bristol. If you take the average of the approved peer group, it is a 223% side setback waiver granted, and our request is 176%. Stated differently, 47% reduction over what the city commission has granted on average to our peer group. And I'm happy to come back to these. I know this is, you know, somewhat confusing to follow, but what I'm trying to do is, no matter which way you slice this and dice this, what we are requesting is less than what has been granted to everyone else, or almost identical to what was granted to everyone else. And why is that? Because we have more land. And in fact, if we go back to one of these earlier slides, if we use the average 142.55 feet per acre, it would have given us a building 485 feet tall, not the 352 feet that we're requesting. And I advised my client to seek the entire 485 feet, and I'm going to tell you why later. They asked RAMSA to design with no constraints the best building they could design, and it came out at the 352. But if we followed what everyone else got, it would be 140 feet higher. This illustrates the plan that we had initially when we went to staff, showing townhouses on Flagler Drive, again, to create that pedestrian, street-edge, urban-style development. Staff came back to us and asked us to adhere to something that is not in the code, which is a 70-foot setback, which we did, which allowed us to create this green space, as well as this open pedestrian space, as well as a 10-foot-wide sidewalk with an allay of live oaks. RAMSA and Rob have already gone through this with you, but I think this juxtaposition of what was possible versus what is proposed illustrates the brilliance of the design and the lessening of the impact with two slender buildings, breathing space in between, and not really visible unless, you know, I would argue, you have to dive into the intercoastal waterway and swim out in the middle of the channel and look back before you can fully see this height, unlike the peer group. And this is the experience that we will have as pedestrians, users of a public sidewalk and a 70-foot-wide public usable space. This illustrates, we were asked, what would this look like all the way around the building for a pedestrian? So this study illustrates, if you start at number one, down at the southwest corner of the project, and walk east, and we removed all of the landscape, all of the of the project, and walk east, and we removed all of the landscape, all of the canopies, all the gingerbread, so you're looking simply at the massing of the building. Moving to number two, so here's one, here's two, here is three, which is that corner that I just showed you, with the people and the landscape gone. Number four is traveling north up Flagler Drive. Number five is at the northeast corner of the project, looking back towards the project. Number six is that Mulder Court, which is the front door of the project. Number seven is at the corner where Memorial Presbyterian Church is located, at Olive and Curry Crescent, looking to the southeast. And finally, number eight, this is that café area and the residential entrance. And the purpose of this is to demonstrate that, to the human being on the ground, this feels like a three-story, what you would feel in the downtown, an urban development brought to the edge of the street feel, not a tower on an island. This is a comparative height study to show you why it's in context with what is already built and about to be built in our community. Leclercy is now topped off. I think Forte begins construction soon. One Flagler is under construction. This project is somewhere in the offing. This project is topped out and should be done in 2022. This is the height that was approved in the Core 1A by you last month in Curry Park or the Seamud District. And this is the Icon Marina Village, which I believe can have up to six towers, a couple of which I believe are under construction now. So that is the height. I'm happy to come back to it, the side setback waiver, which we call height. Now I'm going to clump together three very similar waivers that staff calls out as three separate waivers, but they're effectively the same thing. And that is de minimis encroachments of balconies, bay windows, and awnings into the public right-of-way above, above your head. So probably is on every street in our downtown master plan, encroachments, cantilevered over the public right-of-way. This is very similar. And these range from 18 inches to five feet of encroachment. It'll never affect the public experience at the street level. So waiver number nine is for balconies. Waiver 10 is for awnings that protrude or encroach into your public right-of-way. And waiver number 11 are the bay windows. This, of course, could be cured if you wanted to have a straight, flat facade on the building, but we don't think that is in keeping with the other architectural elements in the neighborhood. It does not provide the architectural articulation, certainly does not provide the building interest. But that would be the way to cure that. And finally, waiver number 12 is landscaping. And I'm sure, as you have viewed the images of this project, you could not imagine that we are deficient in any landscaping, but we are in one area, and that is trees. And I will explain to you why. Your code requires 35 trees onsite and one, and one for each of the 109 dwelling units. So if you add those together, that is the required number of trees under your code onsite. Incidentally, we are retaining all existing trees onsite, including that large specimen tree that will be relocated to the olive side in front of the café. Why are we not accommodating all of them onsite? For a couple of reasons. We wanted to make a hardscape and fountain and publicly usable area here. Had we not done so, we could fit the trees in here. We also were not required to create a 10-foot-wide sidewalk, but we thought it was important for the future of a city that is becoming much more pedestrian-oriented to do that here, here, and here. Well, when you do that, you eat up real estate that could have been used for trees. The second reason is both sides of Norton Gallery Park are presently lined with ficus benjamina trees, and they are susceptible to whitefly, and they've been dying one by one. So if you go down Diana, you'll notice that there's a tree, no tree where there used to be a tree, and a tree. And it's a bit of a checkerboard pattern, and we know what the final fate of these will ultimately be. So the city landscape architect, Arbrist, asked us if we'd be willing to remove all of those on both sides of Norton Gallery Park at our expense and replace those with two different types of trees, green buttonwood and royal palms, which you saw in an earlier image. And we've agreed to do that. So actually, when you add up our onsite and offsite trees that is being done at the request of your staff for the public good, we are actually over 22 trees, except we continue to be deficient on our site, thus the need for waiver number 12. I will also point out that your code requires that we plant 83 shrubs. We are planting 1,947 shrubs onsite. I will repeat that. We are required to put in 83. We are proposing 1,947. I'll also tell you that every tree that is being put in exceeds your code requirement for clear trunk height, which is 12 feet. Our allay of sea grapes will be planted out clear trunk at 26 feet, more than twice your code requirement. So we will exceed your code requirement on all of those trees. And most importantly, these are not being purchased in bulk from a nursery, and they look like lollipops, all lined up in a row, symmetrical. All of these will be handpicked by our landscape architect. They will all look different, and it will look, from the day it's planted, like a mature landscaping scheme. So those are our 12 waiver requests. I want to wrap up talking about something that's very important to our community, and that is the revenue that this project will generate, which is highlighted in green. Should this be approved and built as proposed, this project would generate annually, in total ad valorem taxes to all the taxing authorities, over $21 million a year. The city's portion of that would be almost $8.2 million per year at full sellout. I want to, for contextual purposes, compare that to the other largest taxpayers in our city. As you know, the high watermark is the Bristol. Last year, they paid about $3 million in taxes to the city. This project, Flagler Towers, would be more than double that. Two City Plaza, 1.8 million. Phillips Point, 1.7 million. That's both towers of Phillips Point combined. Trump Plaza, 1.5 million. Palm Beach Outlet malls, 72 acres of traffic jam, generates 1.4 million dollars a year. City Place Office Tower, my building, million dollars a year. Esperante, almost a million a year. St. Mary's Hospital, for-profit hospital operator on a very large campus, half a million dollars a year. In fact, you can add up Two City Plaza, Phillips Point, Trump Plaza, Palm Beach Outlets, City Place Office Tower, Esperante, and St. Mary's cumulatively do not add up to what this project would create per year to the city. Important point that you all recognize, but I'd like everyone else in the audience to recognize, almost all of our big valuable development is occurring in the DMP, which is in a CRA, which is fantastic. That makes your CRA flush with money, but that does not allow you to spend that money outside of the CRA. This project is outside of the CRA, meaning this $8.2 million a year could be spent anywhere in this city. So when we have flooding at Australian and Palm Beach Lakes, or Gaines Park, Coleman Park, Phipps Park, Howard Park, need improvements, this money is available for it. We decided to break it down, we took the total cost of a first responder in this city, police or firefighter, and we added in all of their pension, health insurance, everything. And at, oops, at $160,000 per year, you could add 48 more first responders to our community, to serve the entire community, just based on this one project. This only has 109 families that will be living there, some of which will likely be seasonal. So there's almost no impact from this project to our public services or our roadway network. But yet, an enormous return to the public coffers that allow you to do a lot. Ladies and gentlemen, that represents 9% of the entire ad valorem produced by the city every year. Can you imagine one project with 109 people, 109 families, could generate almost 10% of the total ad valorem collected by the city? Let me break it down even further, because we are in front of you this evening with a staff recommendation for approval on the project, but for the height above 300 feet, which staff is not recommending approval for. They are asking you to exercise your discretion, whether or not to allow us that additional height. Let me show you what that additional, and it's no longer 56 feet of height, it's 52 feet of height, from 300 to 352, it would generate 1.8 million dollars a year, just that 56 feet, which, again, that 56 feet is more than both Phillips Point Towers combined, all of the 72-acre outlet mall, which has police and fire and ambulance there every day, absorbing public resources. City Place Office Tower, Esperante, St. Mary's, just that top. Now let me tell you the most compelling reason, in my mind, why you should approve that additional height, and the very reason that I advise my client to seek the entire 485, that I think they would be entitled to under the precedent set by this commission. And that is, we are the lucky beneficiaries of being on the receiving end of some of America's and the world's greatest jobs moving to our community. And as some of you probably know, there are more to come, and it's not a few jobs, it's not a few hundred jobs, it's in the thousands of jobs, of very highly compensated people. And folks, we're running out of areas to house them. We have a housing crisis, not only at the affordable level, but at the luxury level. If we do not house them in our city, do you know where they're going to go? They're going to go to Palm Beach Gardens, Jupiter, Jupiter Island, Old Palm, Old Marsh, Mallon Isles, you know, Seminole, you pick the neighborhood, it's not in West Palm Beach. And they take with them their money, their spending, their intellectual capital, their kids go to those schools, they join those PTAs, they join those rotary clubs. We lose those people. And then to compound the problem, you know where they're all going to go to work? One Flagler, 360 Rosemary, Phillips Point. So during the AM peak, those people that we have now exported to Palm Beach Gardens are going to drive down I-95 and eastbound on Okeechobee during the AM peak, where we already have traffic issues. And then in the afternoon, during the PM peak, they're going to drive west on Lakeview to go back to I-95, to go back to Palm Beach Gardens. We would be insane to not house them in our community and have those people living two blocks from One Flagler, where they can walk to work and take those cars off the road and leave their money and their brain power and their ingenuity and their children in our community and not someone else's community. Think about the resources that we and the BDB have spent attracting these companies to West Palm. And they're coming to West Palm. And then we have a closed-for-business sign on the luxury housing that those people need. So I would assert to you that the smartest thing we could do is add more height here, because you do not feel it as you're driving your car down the road, you do not feel it as you're walking down the road. It has been well masked and mitigated behind a terrific, street-level, urban feel, and the alternative is to let those folks go. I will also remind you, which you all know, so this is more for the public's benefit, the staff wants to cap this at 300 feet. There is nothing in your code that caps it at 300 feet. There is nothing magical or mystical about the number 300, it's simply what has been done in the past. And I would assert to you that what has been done in the past in this community has little bearing on what our future will be. Our future is a lot different than when Forte was in front of you three or four years ago, getting approved, or Bristol, whatever that was, eight or nine years ago, and Leclercy over a decade ago. In fact, I would argue that our world has radically changed in the last 12 months. We live in a very different city today than we did even a year ago. And our future, a year from now, will be even different at the rate we're evolving. So I ask that you consider the evolution of this city and looking forward into our future, which you have, which is why we have this opportunity, is because of decisions made by you. I encourage you to not look backwards at an artificial height that is nowhere in the code, that some prior commission, none of which you served on it, set that in a very different day and age. Finally, I would like to put into the record that we meet all of the rezoning standards found in Section 94-32A of the city code. I'm happy to go through these individually. I'm not sure that's a good use of your time. Your staff agrees, and I don't think there's any dispute that we meet all of these. I'm happy to come back to those if you wish. And I will leave you with letters of support. I've been doing this for 23 years now, and I have never, in my career, seen the level of support, particularly from surrounding neighbors. Every surrounding neighbor, with the exception of Forte, supports this project, including those who will be absorbing any height and traffic impacts, and I want to walk through those with you. Palm Beach Atlantic University, the president of which Deborah Schwinn is here to speak to it directly, supports our request, including all the waivers. Family Church, a neighbor just to the north of us, supports the project and all of the waivers. The Norton Museum of Art, directly behind us, the one that probably absorbs the most height and traffic impact, supports the project and all the waiver requests. The N. Norton Sculpture Garden, a couple of blocks down the street, supports it with the waiver request. Related companies, the largest real estate investor in this community and the reason most of these jobs are coming here, they too, even though they also build a competitive luxury project, they support this project because they know that their ability to attract and retain these corporations will be limited if they cannot provide adequate luxury housing to the folks that they're moving here. This one's very interesting. If you know who Great Gulf is, that is the developer of Leclercy. So Leclercy, which you would think would be a direct competitor and would not want this project, supports this project. The Dixie Business Association supports it. The Lake Worth Pioneer Association, which owned where the Norton is today and that two-and-a-half-acre green space down to the water, they no longer own it, they donated that to the city years ago to allow Ralph Norton and his wife to build the Norton Museum, but they retain a reverter interest in that two-and-a-half-acre green space. They received the entire presentation, and they unanimously support it. Memorial Presbyterian Church, our most proximate neighbor to the northwest, and I believe their board chair is here tonight to speak directly to it, they support the proposal, including the waivers. So I'm going to take a breath. I apologize for the long presentation, but I want to establish a very clear record and justification. I think this is the greatest project come in front of this city commission in my career working here. And it deserves every minute that we're devoting to it tonight. And there's one more important piece that I want you to hear about. And that is our MBE Hiring and Training Program, which far surpasses anything that this city has ever seen. And to better describe it to you, I'm going to invite Ben Carson Jr., who is the head of a company called Fulcrum, who is taking the lead on this piece of our project. So Ben, if you would please come forward.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's an honor to be here this evening and a privilege to be partnered with the Frisbee Group, Heinz, and the rest of the team for the Flagler Towers project. We've been impressed with the genuine interest of the team in changing the paradigm of how large development projects can support local community development and diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. The Flagler Towers team, genuine interest in creating sustainable opportunity for underserved communities, aligns strongly with our mission at Fulcrum. We're looking forward to investing in West Palm Beach to build local businesses and encourage job creation. In similar communities across the country, Fulcrum's investments have served as a catalyst to accelerate existing community development and economic development efforts. We do not tell communities what they need, we provide support to realize local objectives. Our approach has led to Fulcrum's designation as a public welfare initiative and our qualification under the Community Reinvestment Act. So with me here tonight are two of our team members. I'd like them to stand to be recognized. One is Marcus Martin, he's one of the partners at Fulcrum Funds. Previously, he led the community banking division of Key Bank. And with us also is Eve Mambrié. He is our Managing Director of Impact, and he's led CRA at everything from small, local community banks to groups like JP Morgan. So we have a tremendous amount of expertise, we have a tremendous amount of passion for exactly the work that we're doing across the country and what we would look forward to doing in West Palm Beach. So as an overview of our firm, we were founded back in 2013, so we have eight going on now, nine years of operating history. We've created over 3,000 jobs through our investment efforts, over 37 transactions, investing several hundred million dollars into opportunities such as this. We are a domestic investor only, and we only invest in minority-owned businesses to create sustainable opportunity for underserved communities. We do invest in several core sectors that we believe will be very impactful to local communities here in West Palm Beach. Those include government contracting, healthcare, and franchising. And I'm pleased to say that, as of this trip, we are officially identifying our first target for investment here in the Palm Beach area, which we believe can create several hundred jobs for underserved individuals. One other thing I'd like to highlight, which is a stat that we're very proud of, we're very focused on job creation. Our average investment to create a job has been $14,000. So as you are all aware, that is much lower than the typical cost to create a job. When we look at creating jobs, these are real jobs, these are sustainable jobs, they're jobs that pay at least $60,000 per year. So these are not something that's a low-income job that will perpetuate a system of no opportunity, these are things that will be truly transformative to the area. So as we look at our mission, we were set up to target the issue of the racial wealth gap. We believe it is the defining issue of our generation. And the starkest difference that we've seen in the racial wealth gap is between black and white communities, where there's a 10x differential in the median household net worth, with 17,000 for your average black household and 171,000 for your average white household. One of the things that the Frisbee family showed us when they first talked to us about becoming part of this project is that in West Palm Beach in particular, there's probably the greatest wealth disparity of anywhere in the world, we are still looking for any stat to disprove that notion, where you have dire poverty combined with billionaires in the same exact zip codes here in this area. That is frankly something that we do not see very often anywhere in the world, and something that has been generational here in West Palm Beach. Our firm was set up to intentionally target these types of issues by leveraging the existing market construct of private equity. And we have several key metrics that we accomplished through our investments. The first thing that we have to do when we invest, we are not a charity, we do have to return money for our investors. So everything that we look at is to spur economic outcomes based on also realizing returns for our investor base. I'm proud to say that our last fund was a top quartile performer, we returned over 10x to our investors while also creating jobs and opportunity in underserved communities across this country. There are very few times when you find a very direct alignment between the ability to leverage capitalism as well as create outsized impact in underserved areas. This is another thing that led to our CRA designation and something that allows now us to work directly with banks as a CRA-eligible vehicle. We also target creating the next generation of market-leading minority businesses, and we would love to have some of those be down in West Palm Beach. We see a wonderful macro trend of many businesses moving down to the West Palm Beach area. We see a lot of potential for growth, we see real industries blossoming here. We believe that private equity investment here could be transformative to provide, finally, opportunity to many of the underserved communities that have been here locally for generations. Our third objective is to create generational wealth for our minority executives and to drive sustainable economic opportunity for underserved communities. That is the crux of what we do, and we have a very interesting model by which we execute that. I won't run through absolutely every piece of this because it is a relatively complex model, but it has been endorsed by groups such as the U.S. Black Chamber of Commerce, the Aspen Institute, et cetera, as the leading strategy to reduce racial wealth gap in this country. What we're really excited about for the West Palm Beach area, as we continue to explore this market, is that the macro trends and the need are both here. We've found also businesses that fit our investment profile here, and we can leverage those businesses to create additional opportunity for other small minority businesses here in this local city. The way that our model works is we look to partner with state and local projects or municipalities to find opportunities for contracting and bring several aligned businesses as anchor institutions to that community. At that point, after our investment, we take those businesses and take them from maybe a 2% or 3% supplier diverse spend, which is industry standard, to a goal of 75% local diverse spend. That will drive millions and millions of dollars in contracts to the local community. What we know to be true of every local community that we've executed on this end is that those local minority-owned businesses are not going to be able to accept that much spend day one, so we have intentionally partnered with venture capitalists, with other financial institutions such as banks and otherwise, to bring additional capital in to support smaller business development around our anchor minority-owned businesses that we invest in in these communities. What we have seen over time is that has led to sustainable economic growth, we've created millions of new net worth, we've created a ton of new jobs, thousands and thousands of new jobs, we see these businesses sustaining beyond our ownership, and we also find that it's very hard for us to leave after we deploy this model. People typically want us to stick around for a little bit and do additional investing. So with partnership with the Frisbees and Flagler Tower, we're excited to announce that we've now already committed at least $10 million to the investment into this model in West Palm Beach. We've already located our first targets, and we're excited to deploy this model here locally. Some of the outcomes that we see in terms of creating opportunity, if we have large enterprises here that are minority-owned, mentor protege is something that we've found to be very effective. As a large business, we can teach the smaller businesses how to be most effective, teach them how to scale, teach them how to get access to capital, teach them how to be operationally excellent. We also find that many smaller businesses can be very innovative, whereas our larger businesses can then provide opportunities for contracts. We also see that there are tons of opportunities for training and for board executive level engagement, as well as board level, I'd say reshuffling. So we have a very intentional emphasis on building boards that are indicative of local population in Palm Beach, the black population represents 34%. We look to target board engagement of that level. We also look to encourage jobs, internship, local education, we're very focused on K-12 as well. And what we found is that by having these anchor institutions, not only do we have the commercial application to go ahead and bring these jobs and otherwise, but we also are very intentional about reinvesting in a philanthropic way into the right programs that support that local community. The way that we make sure that this is insured within our portfolio companies, we have community benefits agreements that every company signs before we invest. So we take the goals of the local community, incorporate that into a legal document that all of our portfolio company executives sign, where if they do not hit those objectives for that local community, they will not get their bonuses, their compensation will be impacted, they will not vest on their equity. There is real economic impact to the executive teams running our businesses if they do not perform for the community. We take those extra economics and we reinvest them into the community to make sure that we are always committed to that local effort and the local benefit of that community. So with that, I will go ahead and end it for, you know, what I can talk about probably for, you know, the next three or four hours. We absolutely love what we do, we're excited to be here, and I can't thank you enough for the time this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben. Mayor and Commissioners, that concludes our presentation. We're delighted to try to answer any questions that you have, and I, of course, would like to reserve time for rebuttal later this evening.
All right, are there questions for the applicant, because I do want to hear from staff? Are there any questions for the applicant now, before we hear staff's presentation? Okay. Who from staff will be presenting? Mr. Schneider?
For the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner, and I've got a lot shorter presentation than Mr. Oyer does, or had. I'm just going to cover a few things and make a couple clarifying points. So, the technical stuff, as Mr. Oyer said, you guys are actually doing first reading on the ordinance 496721 tonight, and we just had the discussion on Resolution 311021. So, just real quick, and I know Mr. Oyer showed this, we've got the Bristol, Leclerc, and Forte, and this was the basis of what I'll talk about later on, the one disagreement staff has with the applicant on their request. So as Mr. Oyer said, it's a rezoning from multifamily, high-density residential to residential plan development for 109 residential units, and the café, and then to 352.25-foot tall towers. Do want to point out that staff's 300-foot that we'll talk about a little bit would not affect how many residential units are allowed, the residential units are functioned purely on the density based on the acreage that they have. So there were 12 waivers, Mr. Oyer went through them. One of the things I just want to clarify is on the wall waiver that he went into, the reason that they need the wall waiver is because we measure the wall height from the exterior of the wall on the neighbor's property, and that's why the wall height waiver is needed. The wall height is at different locations, as Mr. Oyer pointed out, sloping up, so there's instances where it exceeds a six-foot from the neighbor's property line, and that's what the waiver's for. Also, he had mentioned that in the Flagler Memorial, or the Pioneer Memorial Park, they're going to be replacing the trees that are there, which is great, with the green button woods. The Royal Palms were not a staff requirement, that was something the applicant put in to actually improve the look there from being their front door, and those conveniently were able to help mitigate the trees that they were not able to put on site. And these aren't waivers that staff has or any, that has an opposition to, so I just wanted to clarify that. Also, so we have the units, they are doing improvements, as Mr. Oyer showed, on South Flagler, South Olive, and Curry Crescent, as well as within the Pioneer Memorial Park. And to clarify, the 70-foot that the applicant's presentation mentioned along Flagler Drive, this is something that has been brought up throughout the projects along Flagler Drive from when it started with the Modern, which is now Leclerc, to have Flagler Drive have a grander view setbacks from Flagler Drive, so we didn't have these towers built or right up at 25 feet. So that's why, then they came in with their first project, while yes, it would have been nice to have had townhouses along Flagler Drive, the fact that we've had this precedent set, that we've had all the projects that have gone forward, to include the garage that the Bristol built, set back and build a area that the public can use in front of them, was where that 70 feet came from. So, then, the one thing that staff does not agree with is the height of the building, and that's basically the Amendment Standard Eight, and dealing with the logical, orderly and logical development pattern and the negative effects. As is stated, the three towers that have been approved south of the downtown, which would be south of Okeechobee Boulevard, the Bristol, Leclerc, and Forte, all of them are under 300 feet. And in fact, the Bristol and Leclerc came in at over 300 when they first came in, and then through the city commission process were reduced to this height. So that's where staff has based their 300-foot height on this is from the precedent that we've seen, or the guidance that we've been directed to in the past. Another thing that Mr. Oyer had said, and the planning board did recommend approval unanimously on October 19th, they found that all, that the RPD request and all 12 waivers met all the standards in the code. One thing that Mr. Oyer said, you didn't need to do any waiver voting today, yes, you do. The PD acreage waiver, because this is the ordinance establishes the RPD, which is where the acreage of the RPD is, rezoning is, the resolution has all the backup material, the plans, the conditions, and everything else, but the acreage waiver is specifically, has to be covered as part of this. So I will ask that you make this, if you find that you're going to move forward with this, that you make this recommendation, and I'll put this screen back up if you need me to, that you can read this as the acreage waiver when you make your motion for the ordinance, whoever's going to make that, if you are moving forward. So, I did also want to mention that in the resolution, since we're discussing it, there was one condition, Condition Number 21, and I'm not going to pull it up unless you want me to, we're still, the city attorney's office has looked at it, and there's a little bit of language that needs to be tweaked from what's in your background, but since you're not voting on it this time, we will want to work with the applicant a little bit and discuss that before we bring it back for second reading, or first, I guess, the actual vote on that, and we will discuss it more, I just wanted to bring up that, so we do have a couple tweaks, or at least one tweak, we're going to make on that. So, are there any questions of staff? I know I zipped through that, but...
Questions for staff? Commissioner Lambert, President Paduzzi?
Thank you so much. And first of all, I want to say thank you so much to the Frisbee family, to Mr. Carson Jr., and to all who presented. Clearly, this is a new day in West Palm Beach, and we've seen it over the last few months, last year, of this growth, and not just growth, but this commitment to our community, and I really see that in the presentation and in your project today, so I want to say thank you for that. Mr. Snyder, I was hoping you could give a little more clarity to the comment that you made, and you made it briefly, about the setbacks of the neighboring high-rises in this area.
Okay, so, okay, so, I didn't come prepared to really discuss this, but I will try to show you on the overhead here, as I move the cursor and it moves my thing. So, if you look on the Bristol, you see this kind of path, this is the driveway up, but in front of here, and they actually did some over here, where they set back and have features to keep the building, the podium of the building set back from Flagler Drive, and they have their water features and some other stuff here. You can see, here's the parking garage, and when they built the parking garage and the overflow parking, you can see that they improved, they put this walkway here in, I believe they did some over here as well, as part of, in front of First Church, because this was their property. You can see how this is set back, this is about 70 feet, you can see the sidewalk that comes off of Flagler Drive onto the property, this is like a little park-like walkway, shaded and so forth. You can't really see it on Forte, because they haven't started building, but they have their driveway up, Mr. Oyer had shown that, and then in this corner here, adjacent to the Flagler Towers project, they have a fountain, a seating area for the public to use, and then they actually have, it slopes up with some art installations and stuff. You saw the Flagler Towers, they did a good job, they actually put the 10-foot sidewalk, which is wider than, I believe anybody's done, I didn't do the Bristol and the ones, but I believe the 10-foot sidewalk is the wider of the ones. They also have their area out in front where they have the fountain, the low fountain splash area, and then some landscape along the sidewalk. And then, the original one here is Leclerc, they have a big area here in front that you can't tell because it's under construction, that is about 70 feet back of public use area, they're going to have a path through there, some seating and so forth, lighting, before it gets into the sloping up to their building and their podium. Also, if I'm not mistaken, there's a project further down south Flagler that had it set back as well, wasn't one of my projects, so I can't give you the exact numbers on that one. We've also looked at this on North Flagler, with how to address Flagler Drive, while those setbacks haven't been as large, because those projects are on the east side of Flagler, so they're not directly against the water. South of Okeechobee, we've tried to get those, so it's the bigger area across from the water. So, even though, yes, correct, this exact setback is 25 feet for these towers, we have not supported and discussed with any of the applicants that have come in for these projects, we've discussed with them to push that back, to get the intent that the commission has given us, the guidance in previous recommendations and approvals, so...
Well, thank you for that, and I think earlier in an agenda item, we approved funding for Flagler Drive, and one of our residents spoke up and talked about how Flagler Drive is an unofficial park in the city, and I think that this speaks to it. So, was your recommendation of removing the townhomes, does that help to meet the intent of what you just described?
Well, we didn't say they had to remove the townhomes. Well, we would have liked the townhomes to remain there, but what actually, the way that their garage is designed inside, they ended up taking the townhouses off instead of scooching the building or making the garage smaller to keep those townhouses there. So they had, I don't know if there were two or three townhouse units there that no longer exist. What they replaced that with is, they have like, their residents have a dog park now or a park there that they can access, and one of the things that they did do after our discussions with them, and as you remember, one of the earlier people talked about 200 items that we went through, I'm not sure there were 200, but we, some of the things we talked about when they took the townhouses off, and one of the things they presented was that these were front doors on Flagler, which is a great thing. I mean, would my preference have been that they kept those there? Yes. Unfortunately, because of the, that started doing all the other design things that they had worked, and you saw the presentation on how they got to their building the way it is now. But, through our discussions, they were able to put doors so that the residents can come directly out onto Flagler, as opposed to having to go onto that entry drive that you saw on the north side with the seagrapes, or going out to the south side onto the new sidewalk that they're, or walkway that they're putting across the cities, across the Pioneer... sidewalk that they're, or walkway that they're putting across the cities, across the Pioneer Memorial Park to access their townhouse units. They have a...
Maybe I could rephrase my question if I could, is not just as much about the townhouses, but what they are proposing now, does that meet the intent of what you described as creating that open?
Oh, yes, 100%. And I'm sorry, I didn't understand what your question, but yeah, they did a good job of doing that and presenting, having a good front is presented along Flagler Drive for the residents of the city.
And inconsistency with the neighbors.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
All right, President Paduzzi.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I'm just trying to gain a little perspective from my own edification with regard to the height, since the height is one of, one of the only things out of the 12 that the city isn't necessarily, that staff is not recommending approval on. And I know that this project is 352 feet, and the next highest building is 300 feet in height in that area. I know that during the CMUD discussions, the core, we were talking about the height maximum in the CMUD Core District, and I don't remember how high that building was, but I know that we had talked about not making sure that we didn't want the buildings to be higher than, than the highest, tallest buildings already in the city. This won't, will this be the highest building at 352 feet, or can you remember what we chose as the height restriction in the CMUD Core District?
My understanding is that the CMUD caps out in the core at 350 feet, and you have to do incentives to get there. The building that Mr. Oyer showed with, of the Jeff Green project, the one that went, stopped, and has started back up again, my, I'm pretty sure that that one is going to be the tallest building we have in the city. I don't know the exact height of that. And then the other towers that we have are less than that in height.
Okay, but this will not be the tallest tower in the city then? There is one that's probably taller.
To my understanding, the Jeff Green Tower in our downtown will be the tallest building in the city, and this would be this, maybe the second one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much to the presenters for a very thorough presentation, Mr. Snyder for your staff presentation too. I wanted to talk about the concern that you had put up on the slide, looking at orderly and logical as it pertains to this development. And it does seem like the main question is height. And so as we look at this particular parcel, height and the appetite for height will be determined essentially by this commission. I think when we look at Leclerc, Bristol, there is not a commissioner sitting on this dais that was here when those were approved too. So it really just behooves next generations to figure out what orderly and logical looks like, correct? So there's no standard that says, here is the limitation.
Well, the standard is that, as Mr. Oyer said, and as the code says, the multifamily 32 that the base this is on has no height limit. However, when you go above 40 feet, that's when you start having to put, your building have two feet, for every two feet of height, an additional foot of setback. So this building would have, at 350-odd feet, would have to have 175-odd sides, feet aside setback on each side, which, as Mr. Oyer showed you, it doesn't. It's got 15, the way we measure building, on the sides. So from that standpoint, there is a limit, if you want to say, on how tall a building can be without waivers, by how wide your lot actually is. We do not have, other than, I mean, you can see the Bristol has a decently wide lot. If you went from Flagler Drive, I mean, in north-south configuration, the remainder of those lots where the towers have been built are not very wide. So that's where the waivers come in, and it's based on the height of the building that's proposed.
Sure, so it requires waivers, and similar waivers have been granted. And the reason for those waivers is so that we end up with tall, skinny buildings instead of smaller, wide buildings. So essentially, a smaller, wide building would take up majority of the lot, block a lot of the water, et cetera. So the incentive is to put in a taller, skinnier building, correct?
It depends on the lot. I didn't see what, I haven't run numbers on to see how tall and what the setback implications of meeting code would be on this, what blocky building. I know that when Leclerc came in, and I did Leclerc when it was originally the Modern, so I can speak on the drawing that the applicant had provided at that time, that did show a building meeting code that was a fatter, very low building, taking up the, almost, you know, most, the majority of the lot. In that case, they only had, you know, they didn't have, it detailed out, they were just doing a block massing diagram to show that. Yeah, to see what they could have actually built on this property if they were building it with just meeting height, I don't know. They didn't provide that, and staff did not run that analysis.
Sure, and I just have one more if I may, Mayor.
Excuse me?
I just have one more question if I may.
Okay.
As we're looking at orderly and logical, Commissioner Paduzzi brought up CMUD, and it seems as though the definition of orderly and logical has to do with the building surrounding and its context to residential neighborhoods. And looking at this, just eyeballing it, it looks like this is a building that sits amongst other tall buildings. And it seems to be further away from a residential community than something like a CMUD building would be. So is there a definition that makes the CMUD-type development more orderly and logical than something here, where it's just held to a different standard? Because it would seem to be the same context, taller buildings and then going into a residential community.
Well, the, once again, I didn't do the current CMUD regulations. I'm not as 100% versed on those. The CMUD regulations I did, the buildings were only eight stories tall. So that's a little different than, it's not 300 feet. So one of the things that we're looking at is how does it come down with the higher buildings in the downtown where they're allowed, and then as it transitions down to the lower single-family neighborhoods to the south? You are correct. Does this border a, directly up against a single-family neighborhood? No, it does not. But, you know, and if you, as a board, decide that, you know, over 300 feet is appropriate here now, you know, one of our concerns is, you know, when I, when we did Leclerc, we had a neighborhood resident stand up and say, this, when the applicant said this is not going to be a precedent, and then, of course, at 300 feet, well, now we've seen buildings at 300 feet, once they went up that tall. We don't know what can happen, and as you see, a lot of vacant land over there that, you know, does the next person come in higher than that? Is that orderly to go, the next person, everybody raise it up? I mean, that could be the, your standard for orderly development. We have just based on that, the 300-foot, on, you know, what has been decided on the cases in the past. Two of the three towers were higher, and the commission had them reduce it. The Forte came in at 300 feet because they, their argument, or their understanding was that 300 feet was what was going to get them approved. I'm sure that they probably would have wanted to come in at more, even though they only have, they have a lot less units, because as pointed out, they have a lot less land there. So that's the only way I can answer that, is that it's your call going to be if more than 300 feet is orderly in this, in this location.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, on the height issue, it is, it is certainly not a mystery to any of us up here that West Palm Beach is undergoing a tremendously exciting period in its history. And as the mayor, at some point, you know, the benefits of these new projects and the boost to our tax base, I'm going to be pushing for, you know, reducing the millage. I believe that as we get more of these projects on the books, and our tax base goes up, it's important for our entire city to benefit from that appreciation. And I think now is the time, you know, barring any unforeseen calamities, such as another global pandemic. But I was intrigued by, I think there was a slide that Mr. Oyer had, which suggested that this, just this additional height that we're talking about would generate, I think the number was $1.8 million in annual tax revenue in perpetuity. And if nothing else, I would like to see that, and I'm going to work toward, if we, if it gets approved, to ensure that at the minimum, that that $1.8 million is used to benefit our entire population, taxpaying population, by reducing the millage. I think now is time to start looking at ways, you know, because as the value of properties increase, even though the millage rate remains the same, is the value of property, there's appreciation, it feels like a tax increase. And so it's very important to me to work towards, as we get more and more of these projects on, and certainly this one is before us now, but I need to make this statement publicly, I am going to be working hard to get our millage rate reduced so that our entire community benefits, not just a particular area, not just a particular neighborhood, but the entire city benefits from the increasing number of these projects coming on board. I just need to say that for the record. Any other questions? I do, Madam City Attorney, want you to, before we get into the cards, re-educate us as we start listening to public comment, what the standards are as we are considering this question.
Absolutely, Mayor. This is what we call a quasi-additional proceeding, and what that means is the city has to do three things in essence to comply with the law. One is to provide the appropriate notice, to apply the correct law to the application, and the third thing is to base its decision on competent and substantial evidence. This evening's meeting has been publicly noticed, that's part of your package, the notice that went out. The law that's applicable to the application you're reviewing this evening is, in fact, 9432 that we've been discussing. When you listen to the evidence or the testimony that's submitted by those who are going to speak, you're going to listen to that evidence and have evidence that's based on fact, not pure opinion. You will listen to evidence that supports findings of compliance or non-compliance with the standards that you're applying to the particular application before you.
Okay, any questions yet? Mr. President.
Thank you, and Mayor, there might be, I know that I have a couple of questions for the developer. I know that we held on, off on the questions.
No, it's fine, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure before we went to public comment, Mayor.
Yeah. Do we have any more for staff, and we'll bring the developer back up? Any more questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Oyer, I believe you are on.
I just, I'm going to leave this up there for your reference. If it gets knocked down, I'll come back and put it back up.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. First question just has to do with conversations that I had with the developers of the Forte, and they suggested that they're really not looking for any huge, you know, moving of mountains, just a 20-foot moving of this building to the west. Can you tell us whether you've considered that, and if not, why?
Sure, and I may not be the best person on the team to answer this. The developer and the architect may be a better choice, but as was illustrated, the code requires a 25-foot setback off of Flagler. Staff asked for it to be 70 feet. We added 47 more feet to that, just to the base, and then it steps back four times. So that by the time you get to the top of the building, we exceed the code by a multiple of six on the setback. So asking whether or not it can be set back, it has been dramatically set back. I cannot imagine another developer would have moved their very large investment further and further away from the water. I think they can better describe than I all of the reasons why they did that, but that's the most obvious one, Commissioner.
Should I put back up our president? Just those few slides.
Absolutely.
Can we bring our images back? Sure. Thanks. So Commissioner, in response to your question, this is something that we spend a lot of time studying, and we spent a lot of time discussing with our design team, with all of our partners, and with the Forte Development Team. And what we shared with them is that, obviously, the closer to the water, the more valuable your residences are. And of course, the Forte team has expressed to us a real desire to augment their views, their southern views. And so they've asked us, you know, how far back can you push your towers? Please push them back as far west as you possibly can. That's been their request. And so when we studied that in our design, a big part of taking this monolithic structure and breaking it apart into two more elegant buildings was to balance the massing more appropriately on the site, and to create more view corridors, more light and air, especially the southern light exposure for the Forte residents. And you can see that when we showed that break in between our two towers, how that does create that southern exposure. And so in our process, again, we've shown this evolution of starting at the 25-foot setback, which I know might sound disingenuous, because the staff has suggested that, you know, they really don't want you to start there, they want you to start at 70 feet. But, but again, for illustrative purposes, that's where we're showing this beginning. And then moving it back to the 70-foot, staff requested setback, which, again, leaves tremendous amount of open air to the west of our, of our buildings and for the Forte project. And then ultimately, where we ended our design, which is we pushed our towers as physically, as far west as physically possible. The western tower is set back completely behind the Forte building. And so that age-old adage of, you know, always give the other person the extra dollar, you know, that's really what we were trying to accomplish here in this compromise. We said, we want for the Forte building to affect a greater percentage of our views than we affect of their views. So let's take 50% of our entire massing, and let's put it completely behind their building. And then on our eastern tower, we pushed that back as far as we could until it started to infringe on the motor court. And as we continue to get requests from our neighbor to keep pushing it back, keep pushing it back, it starts to feel like they're, they don't care at all about us. All they want is to maximize their profits without thinking about a successful project to the south. So in response to your question, we have spent a lot of time talking this through with our design team. We've actually included our entire design team on meetings with the Forte team. They did not reciprocate, and they did not ever bring their architects to those meetings. So we actually have never heard directly from their architects what they think would be an appropriate design here. In addition to that, we originally asked to use their same land planner, Joe Verdone, and they conflicted him out and said, we don't want you to use Joe Verdone. So again, at the end of the day, we felt that what we did here was as much as we possibly could, and we thought that they were going to give us a big hug and say, you guys are the greatest neighbors, you know, that we could have.
Did you have a follow-up?
Follow, quick follow-up, Mayor. Do you think that there's any opportunity for compromise that, of sitting down in between either now and then, or between now and second reading, and seeing if you can hash out something that would be more agreeable to them? Or do you think you've exhausted the conversation? Do you think there's any benefit to continuing the conversation?
Yeah, well, you know, we've actually made a few suggestions. One of the suggestions, we offered to purchase any of the residences on their southern facade that they felt were view impaired. They did not accept that request. We also suggested to them that this is a self-inflicted hardship, and again, everything that we suggested, we mean it in the most constructive and collaborative way. And so when we brought up to them that their real concern should not be with our building and how that might affect their southern views, but it should be with the potential for someone to come along and purchase the two lots that are immediately adjacent to their east, that actually are waterfront lots that could impair their views. And we said, we would actually help to purchase that land and donate it to creating a park, and you'd be able to use part of it to move your towers east, as we've shown on these, the succession of these slides here. So we're always open to talk, but at this point in our design process, you know, we have already pushed our towers as far west as we possibly can.
Commissioner, I'd like to further address that, because at the Planning Board, Forte sent a representative to state that we had not communicated with them. We dispelled that by putting a list on, in the public record on the big screen to the Planning Board with 21 different dates that we had interaction with them. So they then pivoted from, you will never speak to us, to, okay, you really did speak to us, but you didn't do what we want you to do. And I think what Rob Frisbee just showed you is during those 21 communication points, now 23, there have been two more between Planning Board and today, they've broken this mass in half, they've moved 50% of the project completely behind them, and set this back further than staff requires, code requires, or I think any other reasonable person would. And then they offered to purchase any of the site impaired units in Forte, not just to be a good neighbor, but because they know that this Robert Stern Building is going to command a 20% premium as the Stern Buildings... is gonna command a twenty percent premium as the stern buildings all over the world do versus their neighboring projects. So they're going to pick up value. They didn't wanna sell their site impaired units. Frisbee Group then offered to purchase the dentist office and split it fifty-fifty with them to allow them to move it forward. So when you ask, is there any room for compromise? I've never seen so much compromise in my career. And no matter what they offer, it's either not good enough or rejected.
You follow? Okay. Other questions? Comments? Okay, we will now proceed to public comment. We have a ton of cards here. So I'm gonna read out, actually, I'm gonna read out about four names per, and then each of the four people, you start making your way toward the podium. Actually, I'm gonna read out eight names because I want some people to the podium on your right and others to go to the other podium, just so we can keep this thing moving. So first four names. Go to the podium, whichever one is closest, and then we'll read it. Donald Burgess, Dennis Grady, Al Adelson. I don't know if he's still here. I don't think he is. Deborah Schwinn and Patrick Keeney. Okay? The four of you could start making your way. And then I'm gonna read out four more names as you guys make your way to the other podium. Jelann, Jelann, okay. The Heralis, and I'm sorry, Jelann, if I mispronounce your name. Al Malafato, Joe Verdone, and Tassula Morgan. Go to the other podium. Make your way up. Okay, Mr. Burgess.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all the members of the, this. Donald Burgess, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. Flagler Towers has been endorsed by the Board of Directors of the Chamber, and your approval tonight would be one more step toward bringing another world-class project to South Flagler Drive. Approval would also spur economic activity during the construction process and through the creation of employment opportunities after construction. Increased employment inevitably results in greater sales tax revenues for the city. Higher property tax revenues is another consideration. These revenues would go into the city's general fund and could be used to cover the cost of essential community services. The approximately eight million dollars projected increase in ad valorem tax revenues is a dramatic improvement over the current's use of the site. The project's design deliberately maintains the city's architectural heritage and utilizes areas on the ground with the goal of stimulating social and economic growth throughout the city. The developers have a strong reputation for the delivery of quality projects, and this one is no exception. There appears to be a strong community support, and the chamber wishes to add its voice to that support. In addition, we agree with Mr. Oyer that, you know, West Palm Beach is the beneficiary of a large wealth migration to the city. And that requires an increase in the housing inventory. But in addition to what Mr. Oyer indicated, it's not just that if we do not provide this housing inventory, people will find housing elsewhere. We face the possibility that they will stay here and if in doing so, increase the upward pressure on housing prices. Therefore, it's, you know, in our best interest to, when we can, increase its inventory. Please vote to approve the project as presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Grady?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Commission, my name is Dennis Grady, and I've worked in downtown West Palm Beach for over thirty-five years. The Flagler Towers proposal before you this evening would be a Class A addition to our community. This luxury condominium project consisting of a hundred and nine units will be a perfect setting, as Mr. Burgess pointed out, to house many of the relocating business owners and CEOs from not only the northeast corridor, but from as far away as California who are relocating to Palm Beach County and specifically to West Palm Beach. This over four-hundred-million-dollar project, when completed, will become, as pointed out many times this evening, the largest source of property tax revenue in our community. And as pointed out by the mayor and members of the commission, it's outside of the CRA. It can be used from north to south, east to west, to meet the needs, whatever they may be, as discerned by members of the commission and the mayor. Flagler Towers received written endorsements from the Norton Memorial Presbyterian Church, Family Church, Norton Gallery condo, Leclara, the Bristol, the Trianon, in addition to Palm Beach Atlantic University. That means every surrounding property owner, except for one, has endorsed this project. I urge you to accept staff recommendations and adopt the rezoning item before you, just as the planning board did unanimously just a few weeks ago. I found this evening very intriguing, the introduction of the word compromise. And as I listened, it appeared that compromise only came from one party. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Schwinn?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Deborah Schwinn, and I am president of Palm Beach Atlantic University. Our university has been located in downtown West Palm Beach for fifty-three years. I'm here this evening to show strong support for the proposed Flagler Towers project located on South Flagler Drive. Palm Beach Atlantic University is proud to have found a partner in the Frisbee Group when we were looking to sell our student dormitories on South Flagler. We have worked side by side, the Frisbee's design team, on a product that we at Palm Beach Atlantic University can be proud of. The amount of outreach conducted by the Frisbee Group to share this vision with the community is frankly incredible. In fact, we expect Flagler Towers will jumpstart the university's own master plan, allowing us to grow and better serve our students and this community. We support the height request of this project. We believe the millions this project will generate for West Palm Beach annually will have long-term positive benefits for our city. We also appreciate the architectural design, the attention to detail, and the focus on the pedestrian experience. We envision a world where university students can visit the cafe on-site and engage with the community. We envision a world where residents are utilizing the public space on this site to walk between the waterfront and the Norton Museum and shops on South Dixie. The value of this project goes beyond the revenues generated for the city. It's more, in fact, about connecting our communities together. That is inherently part of our mission at the university. The approval of the Flagler Towers project will facilitate the revitalization of this site, will provide our university with the funding we need to meet our own educational goals, and will be an asset for the city for generations to come. Palm Beach Atlantic University asks you to please vote yes to support this project before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm here with two hats, on a private property owner on Flagler Drive, as well as a trustee of Palm Beach Atlantic University. It's difficult to speak behind an eloquent speaker like Harvey Oyer and Deborah Schwinn. Dr. Schwinn has covered all of the compliments that PBAU could ever want in a developer and a world-class project. I think all the residents here will remember a time where we had a glut of condos, high-end and affordable, both. This is a time that these units are all being absorbed. We haven't heard much about the absorption rate of all of these projects, including Forte's project, which is also a very additive project to the city. I urge you to please approve this world-class project developed by a world-class architect or developer, as well as world-class architects. Thank you.
Thank you. Jelann? And please help me pronounce your last name, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Gilan Dumier, I'm the director of the Norton Museum of Art. And of course, one of the neighbor of that project. And, sorry, I have to put my glasses for once. So Norton is definitely fully supporting this, which is, I mean, everything which is beautifully and so fully designed, definitely support design quality development in a neighborhood, something which upgrade the quality of life in our community, including, of course, the Flagler Towers, which is presented to you tonight. The museum, as you know, is the immediate neighbor to the west of the proposed project. We have met with the team, with the Frisbee team, and putting together this project, and we really appreciate the outreach and the engagement they have with us at every step of the way. The Frisbee Group approach to creating a pedestrian experience on the site is definitely welcome. Like the university, the connectivity which could provide to our community between the South Flagler, the university, South Dixie is really, should not be understated. We fully support the plan to improve the walkability and the safety of pedestrians utilizing the Norton Gallery Park. Currently, this space is under, under, not really utilized. And the activation proposed by this project could really bring this area to life. We have absolutely no concern about the project height. Furthermore, again, the project will support the museum connection to the waterfront and many of the building happening. And it really help enhancing the neighbor's sense of community with active use around the base of the building and a possible community cultural park in the future. We believe that this project will add value to the community, and that it's in line with the surrounding building, the Norton and the neighbor. We, of course, understand the immense benefit to the city for any quality development and the revenue they could generate. So in all of his word, we definitely support that building project, and we ask you to vote yes. Thank you again.
Thank you. Now, I know I have four people teed up, and I'm gonna read all four names to go after these four, so if you can start moving yourselves toward the podium. Ron Warnke, Dave DeMay, Darnell Gardner, and Sylvia Sharps, if you can start making your way. But the next speaker will be Al Malafato.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Al Malafato with Lewis Longman and Walker, and we represent the Flagler Residential LLC, developer of the Forte project at thirteen oh-nine and thirteen eleven South Flagler Drive. In addition to myself, others from my firm will be speaking this evening. Mr. Verdone was supposed to speak, and Mayor, you mentioned his name, but unfortunately, he had a family medical emergency and was compelled to leave. Now, Mr. Verdone was going to present a video, and we would like the opportunity to have my partner Tara Dewey also present that video in addition to her three minutes of speaking, if you might give us that consideration in light of Mr. Verdone's situation.
In addition to?
Just three and three. We would like the opportunity to present the video.
The video will in effect replace Joe Verdone, you're saying?
Well, because Mr. Verdone was gonna present the video, since he's not here.
Okay, how long is the video?
It's about two minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, in addition to three minutes. And also, for the record, I'd like to present, Mr. Verdone wrote a letter to you all today, and I'm gonna present that for the record. And we also sent a letter to all of you today by email late this afternoon stating our legal objections to the project. I'd like to submit that for the record. And also, one more thing I probably should say for the record. When the disclosures of Ex-Parte were made today, I don't think anyone mentioned that we've met with all the city commissioners and we spoke to the mayor, so I think that we'd like to get that on the record. But as you all know, Forte is gonna be located immediately north of our project, I mean, immediately north of the Flagler Towers, and we've heard about that tonight. But we're here tonight to oppose the current design because the adverse effects will cause Forte and our future, because of the adverse effects, it will cause Forte and our future residents. We are not opposed, my clients are not opposed to development of Flagler Towers site. We just oppose the current design. And the president mentioned, Mr. Peruzzi mentioned, would you at least have the opportunity to meet with us to discuss moving the building back another twenty feet? I have to say, I think Mr. Frisbee got hostile in his response to that. And, and they've indicated that they've met with us numerous times. But every time we've met with them, they've told our clients what they're gonna do, but not what we would like them to do. They did not consider what we were asking them to do to, to improve the views and avoid shading and those types of issues. What they're looking to do will have a significant impact on the property values of our building. Mr. Frisbee indicated that they would buy units on the south side. They actually offered to purchase only three units, and it was not consistent what we were looking for.
Thank, thank you very much. Tassula Morgan?
Yes.
Who I believe is with the same law firm, so maybe she can.
Correct. Good evening. My name is Tassula Morgan, Senior Attorney with Lewis Longman and Walker on behalf of Flagler Residential LLC, which is developing the Forte project adjacent to the proposed Flagler Towers. Pursuant to Section ninety-four dash thirty-two A four of the city's code, you, as the city commission, are required to consider eight factors, which include the following: whether the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with existing and proposed land uses, whether and to the extent to which the proposed amendment would adversely affect property values in the area, as well as whether and to the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in an orderly and logical development pattern and the specific identification of any negative effects of such pattern. The project as proposed, with its two three-hundred-and-fifty-two tall towers covering the majority of the site, violates all three of these standards. The city has established a development pattern in this area of South Flagler Drive through its approval of the Bristol, Leclara, and the Forte projects. While the applicant for these projects requested heights in excess of three-hundred feet, all were required to reduce the proposed height of their towers to three-hundred feet or below before the commission would approve them. As noted by Eric Schneider, Principal Planner for the city during the planning board meeting, the setback waiver requested to permit the two three-hundred-and-fifty-two tall towers, as requested, are inconsistent with Standards Four and Eight of Section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the code. At the planning board hearing in support of his findings, Mr. Schneider stated that, and I quote, "While a RPD and a residential tower at this location are not inconsistent, based on the surrounding heights of the buildings that have been approved by the city, the taller towers and the setbacks, setbacks that they've been granted, staff feels that a three-hundred-and-fifty-two-tall tower, residential tower, is inconsistent with what's in the area with the existing and proposed land uses, as well as some of the towers, as well as some of the lower-scale buildings in the area." The scale and intensity of the Flagler Towers project is unprecedented in the city of West Palm Beach. If approved at three-hundred-and-fifty-two feet, Flagler Towers would be the tallest building south of Okeechobee. The Flagler Towers RPD does not respect the scale and proportion of surrounding buildings along Flagler Drive and would be entirely out of the character of the area, to the detriment of the local residential community and the adjacent projects in the area. Therefore, we ask that the commission continue this matter and require that the applicant address the issues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you the attorney's gonna show the video?
Yes. I am, in fact, not going to show the video. Unfortunately, without Mr. Verdone, we're not able to show the video, so that'll save you two minutes of your night tonight.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Tara Dewey of Lewis Longman and Walker. I am here representing Flagler Residential LLC. We are opposed to the project as presented. We are not opposed to development of the site, as my colleagues have articulated, notwithstanding the representations that have been made to you over the duration of the presentation. I think it was an hour and forty-five minutes that they have been allotted. But notwithstanding that fact, in my remaining two minutes and thirty-six seconds, let me clarify some issues. Mr. Oyer spent a lot of time showing you different permutations. Mr. Sawyer spent a lot of time showing you different permutations of the height requirement and how this was not such a big requirement. Let's be clear, three hundred and fifty-two feet is different and inconsistent with three hundred feet. Your staff has identified that as inconsistent with your prior decisions. And let me say, when you were asking about what is the logical pattern of development, the logical pattern of development that exists here, folks, is the one you've already approved. You have applied this law, this setback requirement, to cap height. To do otherwise with this project would be arbitrary and capricious, and a departure from the essential requirements of law. Uh, I would also like to say, to the extent that it was represented, that this was a self-imposed, uh, harm to my client and their, location of their site, and I'm very happy that that graphic is still up, that is not where our project is located. That design was dictated by staff's request and their application of your code in consideration of surrounding impacts, of the impacts of our project on surrounding communities. We submitted a viewshed study, they did not. We submitted a shade study, they did not. We have asked for that repeatedly, it has not been provided. The design plan just shows what they're going to do and where it's going to be laid out in the site. It doesn't provide you with an impact study of how the shading is going to be impact, is going to impact our client's property. The two towers are going to completely shade our northern, our southern view. In summary, and one last thing, we are the only people opposing this. Would you like to know why? Because we are directly impacted by the negative impacts of this project. We are the neighbors that you need to consider as required by your code. We are the ones who are going to have all vehicular access along our common boundary. All of the waivers are relevant to our common boundary. That's why we're here in objection, because we want them addressed, and we ask that you remand so that that can occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna read all four more names, uh, to be teed up after the next four speakers. Jerry Moyo, Bill Nugent, David Smith, and T. Leon Alexander, prepare yourselves. Next speaker will be Ron Warnke.
Uh, yes, my name is Ron Warnke, West Palm Beach. My former address was Central Park West, twenty-five Central Park West, New York City. About twenty years ago, the property, uh, next to us at fifteen Central Park West was demolished by the Zekendorf Group and acquired almost an entire city block. The Zekendorf Group, uh, had Robert Stern, the architect today, who is in charge of the Flagler project, uh, build one of the most spectacular buildings and one of the, uh, ten most desirable addresses in New York City. Now, his cooperation, along with the Frisbee Group, is giving us an opportunity for a great improvement to our area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dave DeMay?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Dave DeMay, a principal with Cast Construction. Uh, as a disclaimer, we have not been chosen to build this project. We're the largest contractor in Palm Beach County. We're based here in West Palm Beach. Our three hundred team members think this is an unbelievable opportunity for the ci, the city. You have the Frisbee Group and Heinz Development, Class A, above board, this is a home run for the city. And just to clarify, uh, one West Palm is four hundred and eighteen feet, ten inches. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Darnell Gardner does not wish to speak, but he is in support of the project. Sylvia Sharps?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Administrator. My name is Sylvia Sharps, CEO, founder of two businesses here in West Palm Beach, at Cityside Suites. I'm here to offer my support of this well-planned, jobs- and revenue-generating project as presented tonight. As a project, you know, as a nonprofit owner and a for-profit owner, I have to generate funds through my for-profit to support my domestic violence victims in my nonprofit. And anytime I could do that, because more jobs have been created in the area, is a win-win for me. And I have looked at their, their prior projects that they've done elsewhere, and they're absolutely gorgeous. I do ask that you do support them and vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, former Mayor Jerry Moyo, welcome.
Having trouble taking this off. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am here this evening to speak in behalf of this, uh, project, uh, Flagler Towers. Um, I didn't write a prepared speech tonight, 'cause I, I just wanted to say to you that I think this brings to our city a really unique opportunity. Um, we have a world-class architect, and what I particularly like about this project is the way that it interacts with the street. We've been talking for years about walkability in our city. We've been talking about place-making, we've been talking about pedestrian experience, and this pro, project brings all of those things together. Um, the pedestrian experience, the on-street views are so amazing. And I know, right now, you're struggling with thinking about the height. Um, remember that we just passed, um, a CMUD, um, redo, and that included heights up to three hundred and fifty feet. So it's not, uh, inconsistent with what we've done at CMUD. I would also like to just make a comment that those folks who have spoken this evening against this project are attorneys. The people, um, who live in the neighborhood, the people who live in this city, the people who are, um, advocating for this project are people who are directly involved with the city, uh, live in the city, um, they're residents, they're voters, they're here supporting this project. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna read all four more names, just start preparing yourselves. Uh, Jim Jenkins, Margaret Horgan, on behalf of Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, Randolph Walker, and Grace, uh, Hughley, Hugh, Hughle. Okay, next speaker, uh, Bill Nugent.
Mayor Commissioners, Bill Nugent, Historic Grandview Heights. Um, to give you a little bit of context, my neighborhood where I live, I look out my front window, I stand in my front yard in Historic Grandview Heights, and I can see Phillips Point, Esperante, the Bristol, and I forget the name of the other building that has a crane on top of it going up. It's gorgeous, it's beautiful. These are great opportunities for the city to continue to move in the thoughtful, progressive way that it has been. Um, as I review and look at this project, the architects, the developer, have put a lot of thought and effort into creating an experience that if you're walking or riding a bike past this project, you very much have a pedestrian experience. When I leave my house to go down to Flagler, I often ride my bike or walk down either Diana Place or Acteon in the Norton Ga, Gallery Park. There's currently no sidewalk. I can ride my bike or walk down there, but it's not the most inviting or pleasant experience if you're a pedestrian. It will be if this project moves forward. You probably have all noticed it, but I think it needs to be really pointed out, that the Norton Park that runs down the side of where this project would be, that's Acteon, Diane Place, and the Wide Grass median, really creates a unique context for this building to go in that allows for this type of design. And finally, I really love how they did a phenomenal job creating a garage that is not a garage, especially so close to my neighborhood. I hope you will all approve this. It may be the greatest project that this city has seen yet.
Thank you. David Smith?
David Smith, South End Resident. After hearing some of the arguments tonight, I'm wondering how New York City ever got the hell built. Uh, the thoughtful design of this project, I've seen from day one, where the, the redesign and the reworking of it to make it right is one of the most thoughtful processes I've ever seen the city go through. I have no problem with the building being three twenty-five, three fifty, three fifty-two, three sixty, three seventy-one point five. That's not a, relevant to me, who stands less than six feet on the ground, I don't look up at the top of the buildings. This isn't Miami, I don't think we're gonna go to fi, sixty stories, seventy stories, eighty stories like Miami. That's for the future commissions to deal with, because I don't think we're going there anytime soon. So I don't see the height as a major problem. But with all the people that are supporting this project, I'm not as interested in what all the lawyers have to say about we who live here all around. Thank you. Please pass this.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, T. Leon Alexander. Is he here? He's not here, he supports the project. Okay. I'm gonna read off four more names and start preparing yourselves before I call the next speakers. Anthony Mack does not wanna speak. "I support this project because it will enhance our community as a whole. Also, investing for the future is how we will continue to help the city grow." So that's from, uh, Anthony Mack. Anyway, the next four names, to prepare yourselves, Michael Odom, Gus Garcia, Charisma Adams, and Stephen Harznett. Uh, but the next speaker will be Jim Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner. Uh, my name is Jim Jenkins, I'm a Flagler Drive resident. And full disclosure, I'm a trustee at Palm Beach Atlantic, but I come today on behalf of Memorial Presbyterian Church, which is immediately to the northwest of the, um, of the proposed Flagler Towers. Uh, we have met with the developers, um, you have a letter that, uh, has been shown on the screen before, uh, of support by the church, uh, for this project. The church was started in nineteen, uh, nineteen twenty-four, and so it has seen a lot of change over the years, and it has embraced that change. Uh, I've actually been a member of the church for more than thirty years, um, uh, and I've seen the change too. We think the change is good, uh, we believe in loving on the neighborhood, uh, we provide space for Boy Scout troops, for, uh, Holics Anonymous, w, we do things at the ground level, and, uh, we really like the way that the Frisbee has designed this project to be, uh, kinda streetscape-friendly. We think that's good for, uh, Memorial. Uh, we don't think that the extra fifty feet makes a bit of difference, uh, you can see where we're located on the map, uh, right behind Forte and, uh, and this project, and we would urge your, uh, approval of this project, including the full height. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, Margaret Ho, Horgan, Horgan, Hagan. Margaret here? She wrote, she supports the project. "The Board of Trustees of the Ann Norton Sculpture Gardens supports the Flagler Towers project and appreciates the importance of place-making in our community. We are grateful for their efforts in, uh, taking the project to the, um, neighborhood's cultural community." And tying the project to the neighborhood's cultural community. Okay. That's from Margaret Horgan, on behalf of Ann Norton Sculpture Garden. Okay, Randolph Walker.
Um, good evening, Mayor James and the City Commissioners. Uh, my name is Randolph Walker. I'm a West Palm Beach resident, and I live in Mango Promenade. Um, I'm here speaking in support of Flagler Towers project, uh, proposed along South Flagler Drive. Uh, we have the ability to generate eight million dollars in additional taxes for our city that can be used for other projects throughout the city. I am in support of the thoughtful design of the buildings, believe in the, uh, connectivity this project will provide between South Flagler and South Dixie. Uh, it will add an overall value into the surrounding neighborhoods, which I live in myself. Uh, you can see how thoughtful the design is, how it adds the pedestrian experience much needed in our surrounding neighborhood. I'm asking you to approve this project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Hughle, Hughley, Hughle?
Good evening, Mayor James and City Commissioners. My name is Grace Hyde, and I am a West Palm Beach resident. I'm here to speak in support of the Flagler Towers project, for I believe it will greatly enhance the pedestrian experience for residents along this area, myself included. Almost daily, I walk along South Olive, past the proposed building site. The current sidewalk is narrow and unkept and often feels unsafe. The exterior of the current buildings lack the charm and beauty that the neighborhood deserves to have. The building design for Flagler Towers is thoughtful and beautiful, from the widened sidewalks to the vibrant greenery. The height of the building as planned is absolutely appropriate to me, especially considering the additional tax revenue it will bring to improve the city. I am thirty years old, and in the next five years, I plan on raising my family in West Palm Beach in this very neighborhood that we are discussing. I am asking that you approve this exciting project as proposed, for it will transform the neighborhood and community for the better. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. All right, I've got, um, four more names, I'm, four more names I'm going to read, just, uh, prepare yourselves. Greg Marmegus, John Carpenter, Nick Nicola, and Shelby Hall. And so the next speaker will be Michael Odom.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, my name is Michael Odom, Road Deville Estates, uh, born and raised in Pleasant City, native of West Palm Beach. And the reason I stress native of West Palm Beach is, a native of West Palm Beach remembers when. I remember when the site of the Benz Hotel was the city hall, the Italian, uh, restaurant across the street was Helen Wilkes, uh, the site we're here right now, city hall, was the Bird Eyes Department Store. So when, when you remember that, you know how to gauge progress. And, and this city has grown. I've seen a lot of administrations come and go, but the economic, uh, impact that it was bringing to the city is phenomenal, and I've seen the progress. I've seen a lot of things happen in West Palm Beach. And I totally support this project for the simple fact that, uh, and I read this, "I don't live close to the project, it does not affect me at all, however, I can appreciate what a project of this magnitude does for, for our entire city. What I see before you is the opportunity to capitalize on the economic boom in our city so all that our residents can benefit." And what I'm hearing is correct, the project would generate eight million dollars a year that would go to our city. That's a lot of money, and those dollars can be used to fund projects and services we need throughout West Palm Beach. That means more police officers, more equipment, more safety, more code officers, more road improvements, and more neighborhood projects. And what I also heard that, tonight, was, uh, Mr. Carson's presentation on the MBE. Uh, I represent some underserved communities, Pleasant City in particular, where I was raised and born. Northwest and Copman Park have their own advocates, but mine, Pleasant City is near and dear to me. So as this project improves and comes to fruition, I really look for Mr. Carson to come to Pleasant City. Mr. Carson? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Gus Garcia? Gus Garcia? Okay, uh, he supports the project. Uh, Charisma Adams?
Good evening, Mayor James, um, Commissioner President, all the commission members, uh, administration. I'm Charisma Adams, and I am a part of the outreach team for the Flagler Towers project. Um, I'm coming here tonight because, over the past couple of months, we've had the opportunity to share this project with members of the community, uh, business members, community members, uh, just residents in general, beyond the footprint of the project. And what everyone was the most excited about was the economic impact to the rest of the city. A lot of these projects, the money has to stay right in the downtown and CRE areas. For the amount of money that gets to go beyond those areas into the rest of the city to help with programming, to help with services, to help with infrastructure, that is much needed in the rest of West Palm Beach, is a huge benefit. And if the additional height gives us more money, then all of the other residents would get to benefit from what the people that live right here on the coastal, they get to enjoy. So I'm here just to let you know that, um, everyone that we've shared this project with, especially, you know, beyond the footprint of that project, has been in support of this project for those reasons. And so I just encourage you to consider that tonight as you make your decision that we're in support of this project.
Thank you. Stephen Harznett?
Good evening, Mayor James and City Commissioners. Um, first I'd like to state, my name's Steve Harznett, Old Northwood, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for showing up for our thirty-third, uh, annual, uh, historic home and holiday tour. So thank you very much. Um, we really love the city, and I hope that we were able to show you how we contribute in giving back to the city. Um, with that being said, what an exciting time to live in West Palm Beach. Um, I don't have to name all the projects that we've discussed, but starting from the south, we can go north, and there's at least a half a dozen exciting projects. and there's at least a half a dozen exciting projects. Each and every one of them stand on their own. Each and every one of them, I think, will be a shining star on the city skyline. Most importantly, they're being developed in the urban area where tall buildings should be, where density should be. Um, it's not a matter of, in, not in my backyard, it's a matter of where they need to be for a growing city. So I want to applaud, um, the architects, I want to, uh, the, the Ramsa Group. I want to applaud the developers, uh, the Frisbee Group and the Heinz Group. Um, I would want to applaud the city staff for working together and finding compromise in all of these difficult areas. And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Oyer for being able to articulate, um, all the variances, and in my opinion, how they all make sense and they're necessary to see this project go forward. It is a thoughtful design in every way. Um, the way it was explained, the way it was illustrated, um, the way it fits on that lot, it makes sense. Um, it's respectful of the waterfront, it's respectful of the city skyline and the neighboring properties. Um, I find it a little ironic, and forgive me if I'm misstating this, um, but the Forte project that's been discussed, it looks to me as though there's a ten-foot, uh, setback from the properties to the north. I'm certain that that must have required a variance. So I think it's a little disingenuous to say, um, what shouldn't apply to one should apply to me. Um, and with that being said, um, I think that, uh, it's, the Frisbee Group or the architects have done everything they can to make this property fit so that it is as respectful as it can be to the neighbors, and I think that's why you have nearly unanimous support, um, from the surrounding institutions and, um, residents and, uh, other businesses. So please, I urge you to vote, uh, in favor of this project as it's being presented. I think the extra one point eight million dollars in revenue for an extra five stories, um, some of which may be the actual crown on the building itself, I think is a very reasonable trade-off. And at some point in time, that thirties, uh, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the thirty-story, um, limit was also probably controversial. It's part of what we see in a growing city and skyline. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna read off four more names. Start positioning yourselves. Charisse Wilson, Eucibius Williams, Liz Carson, and Susan Rothman. Uh, but the next speaker will be Greg Murmigus. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners at all. I am Greg Murmigus. I'm a resident of Thirty-first Street in Old Northwood. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, Heinz and the Frisbee Group for getting Ramsa and doing such, and Ramsa for doing such an elegant, um, design for such an important part of the city. Um, certainly, it's a high-profile lot, um, and I urge you all to approve the changes as they, um, have been presented, including the height differential. I'm a resident of Old Northwood, as I said earlier, and I supported fully the sea mud, uh, changes, and that goes up to three hundred fifty feet. Um, so I'm not only talking the talk and I'm walking the walk. Uh, that neighborhood, or that, that, uh, sea mud is directly, um, um, adjacent to my neighborhood, so I'm willing to live in the shadow of, of three hundred fifty-foot buildings because I believe that is the right place for them, as I do here. So I urge you, support it as it has been presented. Um, it really is a necessary, um, and, and a, uh, a necessary addition to the city, uh, tax-wise, uh, certainly, but also, uh, as far as, uh, getting people, the residences that we need for the incoming jobs, um, and just the, the non-randomness of a skyline. There not, should not be a random three hundred foot, um, height restriction. I don't believe the FAA is requiring that, um, so why should we all be at one level in that area of the city? Again, thank you, and, uh, please do approve it as been presented.
Thank you. John Carpenter?
Good evening, City Administrators. My name is John Carpenter, and I both live and work in West Palm Beach. As a working professional, I see the value in providing an assortment of mixed-use developments that serve as economic engines for our city, our county, and our region. Our area depends on tourism, commerce, and a diversification of industries. It is imperative that we continue to progressively improve the city through investments in infrastructure, real estate, business development, and other entertainment options. The development would meet these objectives by activating an underutilized segment of the city, serve as a connecting element between the Norton Museum of Art on the Dixie Corridor and the Flagler Waterfront. It would also enhance the area with eclectic artwork, shops, and an open green space. The annual tax revenue generated will also provide continual economic benefits that can be allocated to implement or maintain other critical components of the city's growth. It is thus my endorsement of the Flagler Towers project development. I ask that you please consider approving the proposal for the betterment and the vitality of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Nicola?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm Nick Nicola. I've been a resident in West Palm Beach for about four years now, um, and I'm in support of this, uh, Flagler Tower project. I think it, uh, is a great, um, addition to the growing urban fabric of West Palm Beach, uh, especially as the city continues to grow more toward the south. And I think that Frisbee and Heinz, both world-class developers, are going to execute this project in a great manner, uh, as it deserves. Um, have, having great, uh, you know, ground floor, uh, street-level retail, very walkable, um, and adding to all the other projects that are also going up in the neighborhood. Uh, they're going to make the improvements to the, uh, Norton Gallery Park, and the integration of, you know, the building into the public space, I think is going to be, uh, very well done, just given the reputation of the developers. And so I stand here in support, and please vote to, uh, approve the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby Hall?
Good evening, Mayor James and members of the City Commission. My name is Shelby Hall, and I live right here in downtown on, on Avernia Street. I actually just recently moved to downtown West Palm, and I, what I love about, what I love and why I moved here is what it's becoming. Um, I was attracted to the quality of life, the walkability in the downtown area, and the real sense of community that exists here. I am here this evening in support of Flagler Towers, the proposal before you. I believe this project will set a new precedence, a new precedent for West Palm Beach as the city continues to grow and attract new residents to our community. The project's estimated eight million dollars in new revenue for the city is very significant and will aid the continuous growth and beautification that we all hope to, that we all, all hope to achieve in downtown West Palm. In addition, I truly appreciate the sense of placemaking and community the project will provide for, for this specific area of Flagler Drive. The attention to detail, the focus on the pedestrian experience, and the connectivity it will all bring to the area is exactly the type of vision that I, that attracted me to West Palm. I really hope that you will vote yes tonight in support of this project, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna read off four more names. If you could start, uh, preparing yourselves. Verlissa, Verissa Laudas? Uh, again, I pronounce, I apologize for the pronunciation. Alex Milan, John Mike, and Andrew McLaughlin. Uh, the next speaker will be Charisse Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor James and City of Commissioners. My name is Charisse Wilson, and I'm a resident of West Palm Beach. My address is near the, the land of the Presidents. I'm here tonight in support of the Flagler Towers. This project has the potential to help increase property values for the immediate surrounding area and add to the overall tax base of our entire city. Our homes are the oftentimes the most valuable investments we have. While this project isn't close to my neighborhood, it doesn't represent, it does represent how quality, the quality development can greatly improve the value for our city. Those approved values do translate into higher tax base. In addition, the millions in new tax revenues derived from this project can be used to help our community, community throughout the entire city. It's an exciting opportunity for West Palm Beach. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Eucibius Williams? Okay, uh, they, I'm not sure if it's he or she, support the project. This project would generate millions for our city and improve the walkability on Flagler Drive. Liz Carson?
Good evening, Mayor James and City Commissioners. My name is Liz Carson, and I'm a resident of West Palm Beach. I'm here to speak in support of the Flagler Towers project proposed this evening. This project has several important benefits for our city. It will generate eight million in annual tax revenue that can be used citywide. It will increase surrounding property values. It will improve the pedestrian connectivity between South Dixie Highway and South Flagler Drive. It will also improve the Norton Gallery Park. As you can see tonight, this project has broad support. Please join me in supporting Flagler Towers and vote to approve this project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Rothman?
My name is Susan Rothman. I live at twelve hundred South Flagler Drive, the Trianon condominium for more than twenty years, and I am a close neighbor to the, uh, Flagler Tower project. I feel the beauty and grace that will, this project will bring to, uh, our community along with the increase in revenue is invaluable. So I do support the project, and I ask that you vote yes to approve tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna read off the following names. Please position yourselves. Anthony, Sarah Curra, Roger Jansen, Brian Fitzgerald, Bill Henderson, and Darren Studstill. Uh, the next speaker will be Verissa Laudas. Is she not here? Great.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Verissa Laudas. I live at two five five Avernia Street, which is several blocks away from this proposed site. I'm here today in favor of this project. First of all, I like the placemaking aspect. Second, I like the improvements that will be done to the Norton Gallery Park, which will increase safety and walkability, um, of the area. I also like the connect, the connectivity that will be increased from the Norton to the waterfront and our cultural institutions. I know that the big consideration here is the height, and we've heard that the building is designed in a way where it's, it's designed so that pedestrians will not even notice the height increase. What will be noticeable for residents like me is the eight million dollars that will be generated annually for important services, essential services that will improve our infrastructure. It could be used for first responders. It could be used for equipment that benefits public safety. I really think that this project is beneficial to our community. In closing, I would just like to say that this is one of the last valuable pieces of real estate. It's a focal point of our skyline, and it's very important that we get this project, uh, done correctly, and I believe that it is designed to really benefit our skyline. So for these reasons, I hope that you will vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alex Milan? Alex?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Alex Milan. I'm a resident and local business owner. Uh, in my opinion, I think this is the best project that's ever been proposed in the city. Uh, it's being carried out by a world-class architect and development team. Uh, I don't think anyone genuinely opposes the project. Um, I mean, it seems like the only sticking point is the height, but I believe that the worst mistake we could make is making every building in the skyline the same height. You know, you want visual interest in the skyline, and the crowns on the, on the building are so beautiful. I think they deserve to be above the surrounding buildings, so I strongly support the project. I hope you approve it as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. John Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. John Mike, Cargill Point in West Palm Beach. Uh, I have to commend you for your fortitude tonight, all of you. Wow. Day in and day out, you are besieged by requests from city residents for more services. Are you not? How are we gonna provide these services? We've got to have economic development. Successive city administrations, including your own, Mayor James, has ardently pushed for economic development in West Palm Beach. And all of you commissioners, when you run for election, have pushed for more jobs and more economic development here. This is the kind of project which can provide that. I am delighted by the presentation of it and the realization that it provides a campus connecting our waterfront with Dixie Highway, a true campus. The objection concerning height, I don't find objectionable at all. Do we want to have Flagler Drive look like K Street in Washington, where there's a wall of buildings all the same height? Variety is the spice of life. These are beautifully designed buildings. It's a well-thought-out project, and I full-throatedly endorse it and support it. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Andrew McLaughlin? Andrew McLaughlin? Uh, he does support the project. Anthony Curra? Anthony Curra, I think that's the way he pronounced it. He supports the project. Roger Jansen?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just, uh, very briefly, my name is Roger Jansen. I just want to tell you I'm in support of this project. Uh, you've gotten a lot of support, so I'll keep it very brief. Lifelong resident, uh, resident at Flamenco Park Historic District nearby. I've been on the Downtown Action Committee for over twenty years now, current chairperson. So it's just great to see the growth of the city, the change in the master plan, what we've seen downtown. So, uh, this will be a wonderful project, known the Frisbee family for over twenty years, so I can assure you their commitment to excellence will make this a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Brian Fitzgerald? Brian Fitzgerald? Uh, he supports the project. Bill Henderson? Bill Henderson? He supports the project. Darren Studstill?
Uh, good, good evening, Darren Studstill, four oh one North Rosemary. I don't think, uh, first off, let me say, uh, I serve as the Northwest Business Association President. Also, I'm a business owner. Um, I don't think nothing else I can say to add to this project. It just comes down to good sense and common sense. Um, I've been coming to this chamber a long time, and I must say, um, this is the first time since three o'clock until now, I've been pleasancy, pleasantly, uh, pleased. This has been very exciting, being a small business owner and knowing what's going on in, in, in this town. Uh, Mayor, Mayor James, I'm gonna say to you, since you're our quarterback, we go football terms. When the team is doing bad, you get all the blame. When, when the team is doing good, like I feel tonight, you should get some praise. We're doing real good in our city, and I'm very excited about that. I, I, all I wanna say is that I think the team here did, did a great job, uh, of presenting the projects, but I also wanna drill down the opportunities for all. It's very few projects that's on the outside of the court that we can effect change everywhere. And I could just tell you, as a community advocate, I call it the NCP, Northwest Coleman Park and Pleasant City. This is the first time I've seen, heard activity in all three areas. What I, what I like the opportunity is, that it makes good sense, it makes sustainable sense, meaning we got eight million dollars that's coming, that's gonna be generated, so the activities that we have going on can be supported. That's huge. That's a winning recipe. So I'm gonna be quiet, 'cause I know it's been a long night, but I think this project should be approved, approved now, and let's continue to win here in West Palm Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, do we have anything in the portal? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's comments from, um, Botany Thompson, twenty-five hundred Presidential Way, apartment one oh three, West Palm Beach. Mayor James and City Commission, before I endorse the proposed Flagler Towers construction, I take this opportunity to commend you on this swift action to have pop-up- I take this opportunity to commend you on the swift action to have pop-up COVID vaccination centers in our city. Thank you. I'm a resident of the lands of the president in West Palm Beach. I'm delighted with the new development that will take place alongside the esplanade that I walk along every weekend. I care deeply about the environment in which I live and I couldn't be happier that the foremost group in property development, the Frisbee Group, has invested in my city. The in-depth research and authentic care that Frisbee Group has put into the planning of the new towers is heartwarming. Together with their world-class architect, they have thought of everything. Selfishly, the fact that I can walk in a magnificent neighborhood and feel safe is very comforting to me. More importantly though, future generation will benefit hugely by the Frisbee vision for the entire surrounding area of their development. Their intent on beautifying the whole area remarkable. The development will give the whole waterfront a much facelift without being a stark glass building. I love the way the plans are designed to have the higher doors set back so that I, a pedestrian, can feel as though I'm walking amongst people's home and not a giant's glass pillow. They have even planned the back of the building to be attractive. I hereby advocate for this thoughtful and aesthetically magnificent project to go ahead. I appreciate your ongoing support. This comment is from Rav Castan, 937 Big Norean Road, West Palm Beach. Excuse me. I would like to thank the Frisbee Group for investing in our great world-class city of West Palm Beach and the Ramsay Design Team for developing this top-notch, world-class design. This is a smart growth project that has a great public realm that will bring people together with this cafe and outdoor seating. This is what makes a great city. Towers and the towers were a great and positive addition to our waterfront and skyline. This project will help to sustain our local economy by attracting more companies. This will dramatically increase our tax revenues to help our police, fire, and to help build strong neighborhoods. I strongly support the additional 52.2 feet to 352.2 foot towers. Thank you.
That's it? Okay, that's all the cards, all the comments. And now it's time for a decision. So Commissioners, Commissioner Schoeff?
Mayor, I believe Mr. Oyer would like to... Mr. Oyer had requested time for rebuttal before you went to discussion.
Really? Okay, Mr. Oyer, please. Okay.
Sorry to prolong the pain, Mr. Mayor. But there are a couple of things that I think we need to address. The primary one, and first of all, I'd like to thank the entire Louis Longman Walker Law Firm for joining us tonight. I'll note that there were 33 public speakers, 30 were in favor, only three opposed. All three are paid lawyers by the Two Roads Company. The only thing that I wanna address straightforward, because you heard it from both Eric Schneider, your staff member, as well as some of the lawyers for the Forte project. And that is that we do not meet the rezoning standards in Section 94-32A. And I wanna clear that up for the record. Eric Schneider cited the eighth of the eight rezoning standards. And one of the Two Roads lawyers cited standards four, seven, and eight. So I'm gonna read those into the record. Standard number four of your rezoning, found in Section 94-32A, states, "Whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment is inconsistent with existing and proposed land uses." So this pertains to being inconsistent with land uses. What do we have all the way around us? High-rise residential RPDs. Those are the land uses. What are we proposing within that sea of RPDs? Another RPD, which goes to Commissioner Schoeff's earlier point, I believe. So we are not proposing a uranium mine in the middle of RPDs. We are proposing an RPD in the middle of RPDs. And that should be obvious that we meet that fourth standard. Standard number seven, "Whether and the extent to which proposed amendment would adversely affect property values." There has been not one iota of evidence that has been presented into the record that demonstrates that there would be any adverse impact on surrounding property values. In fact, you heard anecdotal evidence from Mr. Warnicki of 15 South Central Park that it added value. And I think if you look at the Robert Stern factor around the world, it's added value in every neighborhood they've ever designed a project. And I can tell you with firsthand experience, that is true of every Frisbee project, whether it's in West Palm, Palm Beach, Nantucket, Isla Merata, all of them added value to the surrounding neighborhood. You've been proffered no evidence contrary to that tonight. And finally, standard number eight, "Whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in an orderly and logical development pattern." Again, this is very similar to number four. What is the development pattern on this portion of South Flagler Drive? It is tall residential buildings. That is what is to the north of us and to the south of us. So I fail to see either the Two Roads attorney's point or staff's point that this is somehow not an orderly and logical development pattern. These are identical uses, very similar heights. This does not speak to a height differential. It speaks to orderly and logical development patterns, which we clearly meet. And there's been no evidence, other than anecdotal, introduced to the contrary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I really have. Rob, did you want to add anything?
Can I add two remarks?
Yes, absolutely.
Just very quickly, I wanna respond to two things that Attorneys Al Malefetto and Tara Dewey said. The first, which was the most disturbing for me, was when Al suggested that my genuine outline of facts was hostile. And I just wanna give you some, some context. After our unanimous approval at the Planning Board, we agreed to meet with the Two Roads team and we suggested that they bring everyone on their investment side, all of their architects, and we can all meet together. They denied that meeting and then they filed a malicious lawsuit against us. And now they're suggesting that we're the ones who are being hostile. And I have to tell you that, you know, that's kind of indicative of the relationship, the way that they've treated us throughout our conversations. I, I then wanna go back to something that Tara Dewey said, where she intimated that while we have a lot of fancy analysis, we should make this much simpler. And that 300 feet, in her words, is very different than 350 feet. And I'd like to, to use that simple analogy and say, take a look at the size of our site, which is over twice as large as their site, and compare it to what their building looks like. Their building, very simply put, looks like it's squeezed on its site. And ours looks much more balanced. So I think whether you're looking at the detailed analysis or whether you're taking a very simple overview of the facts, our site is very proportional to the site and to everything that has come before it. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Now Commissioners, it is time to deliberate and make a decision. Commissioner Schoeff, you had your hand up, I believe?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I wanna say thank you to everybody who came out here tonight to hang out late night with us and share your feelings. Certainly, there is a lot of support from a lot of various places in West Palm Beach. And there is also a neighboring property that still has issues with some of the developments. And we've heard a lot about those tonight. But I guess I wanna kinda look at, from the perspective of what we are here to review and what we are not here to review. What we are not here to review is the Forte site plan. That was done a long time ago. And so all of my comments, while looking at how I would hope we can come to an agreement with the neighbors, we go through this a lot within the city. There are things that are not guaranteed on any development. Views are not guaranteed. Not being in a shadow is not guaranteed. You know, certainly, the church being set back to the west has, has followed in this pathway before too. And so as I look at what we are charged to do here this evening, it is to look at the, the regulations in 94-32. And Mr. Oyer went over some of them and I think staff, for the most part, has agreed with all of them, with one exception of looking at number eight. And Mr. Schneider and I had a conversation on this earlier. It seems as though staff came to the conclusion of not being in agreement with this standard because of previous commission decisions. And, and while I understand it is a tough job to be on staff and have a rotating commission that happens every two years or so, I think it's important to point out that the decisions that staff made based upon those commission decisions were not done by anyone sitting on this commission as a commissioner currently. So sometimes I think what we are here to do is to dictate where the next chapter is going to take us. And so as I look at what is orderly and logical, I'm taken to what's good for my neighborhood is good for other neighborhoods. And, you know, I look at the most recent CMUD regulations that we approved buildings about this height and probably closer to residential neighborhoods than, than this one is here. I look at the order of looking at tall residential buildings, being next to tall residential buildings. I guess my, my hope as a commissioner and a resident of the city is that we continue to try to work together. It seems like there's been a great effort to reach out and I hope that that continues. But looking at what we are charged to do here this evening, and, and I get there's a lot of great benefits that have been highlighted, what we're charged to do is apply the standards to the application. And looking at that, we have a professional staff that agrees with seven of them. The eighth one, from what I have been presented, the evidence that staff was using was based upon what they felt commissions past had approved. And I think that's why it's before us today. So, you know, looking at how we move forward, I think there's a lot of support to move this forward and a lot of evidence that it does represent an orderly and logical development pattern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners, questions? Well, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 4987-21, a rezoning to change approximately 3.4 acres from a multifamily high-density residential designation to a residential plan development, including an acreage waiver to create the Flagler Towers residential plan development. This motion is based upon factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the Planning Board, and the findings that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations. The City Commission finds that particular circumstances justify the reduction of the planned development acreage to less than 10 acres and that the requirements for the planned development district zoning and the benefits to be derived from the planned development district zoning can be derived in such lesser area. Additionally, I'd like to add that the proposed project utilizes innovative land planning and development techniques to create a more desirable and attractive development in the city and complies with the requirements of Section 94-207 applicable to planned developments.
Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and discussed. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4987-21. And as the city commissioner of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, amended the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach by rezoning approximately 3.4 acres, located generally at 1315 South Flagler Drive, from a multifamily high-density residential zoning designation to a residential plan development zoning designation with an acreage waiver to create the Flagler Towers residential plan development, provided for the establishment of development regulations by a separate resolution. Declaring the zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Okay. It is now time for a comment from the general public. We'll give people a few minutes to exit. If you can exit as quietly as you can, please. We got a few cards. Sandy Makovich? Sandy Makovich? Do you not wanna speak? Okay, we'll come to the mics and we'll speak. I'm calling your name.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. Mayor Keith James had me removed from the City Commission meeting on December 5th for what he said was my refusal to put on my mask. I did not refuse to comply, but said I would use the mask when he did. James stated, "The city has a very clear and distinct mask mandate and everyone in the chambers must wear a mask and there are no exceptions to the rule." Almost five hours later, you sat here all night without a mask. Mayor James coughed heavily several times during that meeting, but never put on a mask for the duration of the nearly four-hour meeting. At the following times into the, the meeting, you will hear three of several times Mayor James coughed in that commission meeting and putting me out of the chambers. One hour 28 minutes and 27 seconds, one hour 31 minutes and 10 seconds, one hour 31 minutes and 33 seconds. You're coughing your brains out. When leaving, I called the mayor an SOB. He commented on my language. I will apologize to the mayor if he will apologize to developer Michael McCloskey. Developer Michael McCloskey says he went to City Commission Keith James seeking support for multimillion-dollar downtown project and instead got a profanity-laced tirade in which James said he'd never support the project because the developer supported his opponents. McCloskey, who has been seeking city support for the 500,000-square-foot health and wellness campus for two years, said he met with James in the Commission City Hall office at 2:30 on a Monday to update him on the project and list his support. "That's not how it worked out," developer said Wednesday in an interview with the Palm Beach Post. McCloskey said that after he finished the update, James told him, quote, "Are you through? What effin' universe do you live in, really? What effin' universe do you live in that you think that after how you behaved during the election, raising as much money as you did for my opponent, running around with Kimberly Mitchell and Jessica Pinsky, that you could come to my office and ask for my support on your project? If you had a golden goose that was laying golden eggs up and down Okeechobee Boulevard, I wouldn't vote for the project," James allegedly told the developer. "Now get the F out of my office and you could quote me on that," unquote.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Keith.
Kathy Gardner?
Good evening, everybody, Mayor and Commissioners. Oh, that was quite a time. Well, I'm here regard, well, my name is Kathy Gardner and I'm from Coleman Park. I'm here regarding the Coleman Park Community Center renovations, along with the inclusion of the gymnasium. I think there was a misunderstanding, but I'm here to talk about that. We would like you to know that the residents are expecting and excited to finally have a gym in our community. The gym will be in walking distance, so the children will not have to cross the railroad tracks, which of course is extremely dangerous. It will be most helpful and encouraging for them to play ball and other activities and not have to deal with weather conditions such as rain and heat in order to play. In summary, like any other neighborhood, our children need a safe place to play and the gym will meet that need. We appreciate it totally, your recognizing our serious concern to have the gym and trust that the city is presenting and utilizing every effort to fund this much-needed gymnasium and in a timely manner, along with the renovations process as a whole of our community center. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Gilan is no longer here. Is he? No. Okay. I do have a card from Shakima. She does not wanna speak, but she says, "The residents of Coleman Park and its association would like to be included in discussion, pre-planning decision-making, and implementation with regards to Coleman Park." Okay. Now we turn to comments from members of the dais and we'll start with Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll try to keep my comments brief considering the time. I struggled with my comments this evening, not necessarily due to the subject matter, because I'm not sure that I'm the right messenger. But I feel so strongly that it needs to be said, that I'm gonna say it. A few weeks ago, there was a terrible tragedy in a city to our north. A young man was riding his bike when he was violently assaulted. Sadly, he died. This murder received national news media attention, as it should. People were absolutely shocked. They openly questioned how something like this could possibly happen in... They openly questioned how something like this could possibly happen in their suburban community. I wish we had that same type of reaction here when incidents like this happen in West Palm Beach, but sadly, we don't. Tragic events like this have become all too common. Maybe we are simply numb, and I'm hoping that that's the answer, that we've just become numb. Just last week, between Wednesday and Friday, we had five homicides in two, three days, including a 16-year-old girl. These homicides barely made the national-- barely made the local news, let alone the national news. And all I want to say here today, and just food for thought, is hopefully one day we will come up with some strategies to support cultural changes in our most violent neighborhoods so that these tragic events and tragic events like this become a thing of the past. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to the residents of Coleman Park who stayed all evening because they wanted to address the issue of the gym, and wanted to say thank you to Mayor and to staff. I think there was some confusion, which I've clarified with the city administrator, on the scope of their renovation and gymnasium expansion. And so, very thankful for all staff for working to try to identify funding sources. As we all know, construction costs have gone up, and the original budget we had for the Coleman Park Community Center and gym expansion is getting a little tight. And so, we're looking to be creative in ways of identifying a funding gap to make sure that this community that asks for very little and is really set to get a great resource. Many of you attended the Tammeran Slam. You saw the great need for basketball and sports and great things in the community. And to Commissioner Peduzzi's comments, we have unfortunate tragic events that happen to some of our youngest people. And so, for us to be able to provide a safe place for them to go, I think, is very important. And Mayor, appreciate your support, and ongoing support of Coleman Park in that as well. I wanted to say thank you also to Old Northwood for putting on a great event, and Commissioners and Mayor for joining us out there to see a little bit of the neighborhood. Also, to the DDA for putting on a great caroling sing-along on the porch of 314 Clemente Street. So we have a lot of great things going on in the holidays, and certainly appreciate West Palm Beach PD and West Palm Beach FD for their various toy drives and helping to help everyone in our community at this time. And so, we have another great fundraiser. We have one of our West Palm Beach PD officers that has run into some health challenges with both her and her family. And Old Northwood has organized to invite all the communities. So, everyone to come in on the 18th, so this coming Saturday, from 5 to 8, will be collecting checks to give this officer some funding to help fund some health needs for both her and her son. So if you're available to join us, please come out. Hard to believe, Commissioners, but this is our last meeting before the holidays. So, Mayor, Commissioners, city staff wanted to wish happy holidays to everyone here and to the public. Please stay safe, get out, enjoy some family, and enjoy just being with one another. Stay safe. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Just a few updates, and wanted to say thank you so much to the police chief, to his leadership team, to Officer Seth Buxton for showing up in the south end and hosting neighborhood meetings. And I did want to clarify something. I know that we often use the term "the south end," and I think that we generally mean south of Okeechobee. And so I know that some folks who live just south of Okeechobee in the Flamingo Park areas and the El Cid areas, that they are also invited to this. This is all south of Okeechobee to our Lake Worth border, south-end neighborhoods meeting. And the next one is on January 19th at the South Florida Science Center, which is now called the Cox Science Center. It's great to hear so many kindness stories and people being just wonderful neighbors to one another, having these toy drives, having these fundraisers for our friends and neighbors here. And I, you know, recently had the great benefit of being able to connect a neighbor to one of our schools who provided hundreds of dollars of Public's gift cards to teachers who work in our local schools as a give-back and a thank-you. And I would just encourage us to keep that up throughout the rest of the year as well. And finally, Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you so much. Your chief of staff reached out to me recently and is-- I'm excited to be working with her on some education initiatives with our education committee, and hope to have more to report on that soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say anything that gets Michael Oldham to the podium is probably a miracle. So, that was very interesting for Michael Oldham to come down and speak today. I know that we're not all historians like Mr. Oyer is, but it was great to hear history and the cycle of history, and that it's been more than 100 years since we've seen world-class architecture, and to see that that cycle is upon us again, that people are interested in doing amazing things, amazing projects in West Palm Beach. So, I just want to say to you all that I think this really does make us history makers as we are a part of the growth and development of this city. I would like to acknowledge and celebrate the success of ECF Consultants. ECF is an engineering firm that is located in District 2, and they have been fortunate enough to acquire some property, even though it's going to be in District 1. I am celebrating their success, their growth, and their ability to do something amazing, and that they have a predominantly MWBE team that they're working with to bring that project together, and it's going to be fantastic. And I'm just very happy and humbled to see that the new HCD building will be named after Eva Mack, and I thank all of you for recognizing her contributions to our great city. And I think that her legacy lives on, and it goes, you know, it's going to serve so many people beyond what her original vision was. And thank you for helping to make that happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. In Commissioner Lambert's comments, she was just mentioning about the south-end police meetings. I wanted to mention that this Wednesday, the West Palm Beach Police Department will also be hosting the police chiefs' meetings for the downtown. They will be every third Wednesday, no, third Wednesday of every other month at 6:00 p.m. And the first one will be this Wednesday, December 15th. They are being held at the West Palm Beach PD Community Room on 600 Banyon Boulevard. I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight about safety and public safety, and there are different questions, I think, in all the neighborhoods. But this is a great opportunity to talk to the chief and see what some of the things that they're working on have questions answered. So I really appreciated that this is going on, I think, and throughout the city. I just know that these two maybe were the first two meetings scheduled, and that there will be others in the rest of the city coming soon. I wanted to mention that there will be photos with Santa at Howard Park this Friday, December 17th, between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. It's not too late to get your family photos with Santa if you haven't already. And then I also wanted to just thank the West Palm Beach PD and Officer Buxton for the great toy drive at Solentown Coffee Shop. If you weren't able to make it last week, the toy drive was-- is going on until December 20th, so it's not too late to bring some of your toys for tots. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a few things. First of all, thank you, Mr. President, for referring to the recent violence. Let me assure you that we are not, as a city, as administration, numb to any deaths in our city. And I can't speak to what the media covers, but although we have-- we're doing better in terms of homicides in our city from when I first came in the office to date, we are still looking at 21 fatal shootings in our city. That's 21 too many. And I campaigned on, and I still tout, that public safety is job one. You know, we brag about all of this growth that's coming to our city, justifiably so. But that will be short-lived. Those successes will be short-lived if we have a reputation as a city that can't control violent crime. So, I understand the-- and I know that our police chief and the department understands the urgency of the matter when it comes to violent crime. And last weekend was a tough weekend, particularly to the young girl, 16-year-old, who just was in the wrong place at the wrong time. And, you know, my heart goes out to her family, who carried her to the hospital and had to watch that girl die. So, this is-- this is a priority, continued to be a priority. And I know Chief Adderley and his team are doing everything they can to make our streets even safer. And, you know, we're looking at, obviously, working to address the root causes of this violence in certain of our neighborhoods. And so, we will continue to do that. But no, we are not numb to this at all, because even one murder is too many. And we cannot win as a city. We will not progress. We will not mature. We will not grow as a city until everybody in our community feels safe. So we'll continue to work at it. And, yeah, it's job one. On Saturday, I emailed residents about a very important issue, and hopefully Commissioners, you saw it, and it relates to the battle, the fight against State Road 7 extension. The Corps recently announced that they're going to hold a hearing on the permit for State Road 7. And so, there is a comment period in which the Corps is accepting public comment regarding this. So if any one of the sound of my voice opposes the State Road 7 extension, as my email said, we strongly urge you to submit your comment for inclusion. The comments can be emailed to randy.l.turner@usace-army.mil. And I'll repeat that. Or you can mail comments to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, District Engineer, Jacksonville Permit Section, PO Box 4970, Jacksonville, Florida. I'll repeat that address. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, District Engineer, Jacksonville Permit Section, PO Box 4970, Jacksonville, Florida, 32232. Time is of the essence because the comments must be received on or before December 29th, which is only 16 days away. So, this is the public's opportunity to express their concerns, any concerns they may have about the State Road 7 extension, and we should take advantage of that. By the way, a copy of my letter to residents is posted to our website with this information, as well as links to the permit. So visit wpb.org/news. Had an opportunity to participate in a press conference with Congresswoman Frankel. This morning, we were joined by Palm Beach County Resiliency Officer Dr. Jake Leach to discuss the new infrastructure bill, which contains $50 billion for climate resilience. Congresswoman gave me preliminary assurances that the city will receive federal funds to continue to harden our infrastructure. I want to remind everyone that the city is hosting many holiday events, from letter-writing to Santa at the library, to Holiday in Paradise, and Sandy's 10th anniversary on the Great Lawn. Visit wpb.org for more information. And since this is the last meeting before Christmas, I want to wish, from my wife, Lorna, and myself, to everyone here on the dais, and certainly under the sound of my voice, a very safe and merry Christmas. Thank you all for all you do, and this meeting is adjourned.